All right, this meeting is called to order. Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to another regular City Commission meeting of the city of Boynton Beach. Today is Tuesday, May 2, 2023, and the time is now 5:01 PM. We are starting a little bit earlier for our closed-door session, at which point, in a few moments, we'll have the city attorney make that a formal announcement. City Clerk, if you could please begin the roll call.
Mayor Penzerga?
Here.
Vice Mayor Turkin?
Present.
Commissioner Cruz?
Here.
Commissioner Hay?
Here.
Commissioner Kelly?
Here.
Mayor, you have a form.
Thank you so much. Our invocation for this evening will be led by Pastor Dwayne Roberts from Calvary Chapel, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by myself. If we could all please stand for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Regular meeting. I was still sitting here. Do I have the old copy? Is that what it is? That's, that's okay. We'll do it when we come back. How about that? We'll...
Both at the opening?
We'll do when we return. Is that what you're recommending?
At 6 o'clock, we'll do both the invocation and the pledge.
We'll do that. Sounds good.
It'll work.
Okay. It sounds good. We'll do that when we return. I'm just going to turn now to our city attorney to make the formal announcement.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Commission pursuant to Section 286.0118 Florida statutes, the attorney-client closed-door session will now commence to discuss the case of Natalie Flake, plaintiff versus City Point Beach defendant, Palm Beach County Circuit Court Case Number 50-2021 CA 006932 XXXX MB. The time is now 5:03 PM. The meeting is anticipated to last approximately 45 minutes to one hour. Attending the meeting are Mayor Ty Penzerga, Vice Mayor Thomas Turkin, Commissioner Angela Cruz, Commissioner Woodrow Hay, Commissioner Amy Kelly, City Manager Dan Dugger, myself, City Attorney Michael Cirillo, and Defense Counsel Christopher Sterns of the law firm of Johnson &amp; Selma, Murdoch, Burke, Piper, and Hockman. We also have a court reporter present as well. So at this time, I would ask the commission to recess into the executive session.
Thank you, city attorney. If there's nothing else, may the motion to recess until the conclusion of the closed-door session. I heard a motion from Vice Mayor Turkin, a second from Commissioner Hay. All those in favor of the recess say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, the ayes have it. We are now recessed. We will resume approximately 6 PM. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the broadcast has just started, and we are now recording.
Thank you. City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Commission, it's now 5:24 PM, and the executive closed-door session has concluded and terminated. And under the parameters of the agenda, the regular agenda items will resume at 6 PM.
All right, thank you. We will see you at 6 PM.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the broadcast is restarting. We are now recording.
Thank you. We have returned from a closed-door session to discuss legal matters, and I'm calling this meeting back to order. If you have just joined us, welcome to our regular City Commission meeting here in the city of Boynton Beach. Again, today is Tuesday, May 2, 2023, and the time is now 6:01 PM. As usual, same rules of civility and decorum. Officials must first be addressed by the chair and not interrupt a speaker. Public comments must be addressed to the whole, not to any individual on the dais or in the audience. Personal attacks, insults, and similar behaviors are strictly prohibited, so please govern yourselves accordingly. City Clerk, I'm going to turn to you. If you could please repeat the roll call.
Mayor Penzerga?
Here.
Vice Mayor Turkin?
Present.
Commissioner Cruz?
Here.
Commissioner Hay?
Here.
Commissioner Kelly?
Here.
Mayor, you have a form.
Thank you. Our invocation for this evening will be led by Pastor Emily Ash of First Presbyterian Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by myself. If we could all stand for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Excuse me. Is the microphone on?
Hello.
There we go.
We're still speaking to God. Thank you for every seat that has been filled here today, for each mind and heart that fills the presence of this room. We thank you. Together, we have talents, abilities, and time to work. However, only you, God, can see in perfect detail the end of every beginning, every project, every season, every life. Nothing is ever in vain, for even mistakes and missteps are used for good. Your righteousness just transcends all our efforts and understanding. Forgive us for our pride. Strengthen our confidence in you. Set us free from comparisons, so we can work together on peace and success for the people, the businesses, the first responders, and those leading our beautiful city. Blessed is meeting today, all those present, those who are at home online, as well as the lives of those we encounter afterwards, ready to make us for every moment count. We pray and hope in you. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, and thank you, Pastor Ash. We're going to move on now to agenda approval. These are where we make additions, deletions, reorganizations to the agenda, and we're going to go around the dais. I'm going to begin with our city manager. There is one administrative change. City Manager Dugger?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, we're in, I guess to save time and be a little bit more efficient, we put together some dates for some workshops that you guys had requested. I want to call Amanda Radigan up to the podium. She'll explain the dates. I want to get a consensus on what works best for all of you, as opposed to doing it individually, one by one, and now that we're all gathered here, so.
City Manager and Ms. Radigan, I think that's a discussion item we should add to the agenda.
Right.
Okay? So if we could have that conversation later? But yes, absolutely, I would be in favor of having that today.
Okay.
So it can give you some direction on the scheduling. All right. Let's begin on my right. Commissioner Cruz, anything else?
Nothing for today.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner. City Manager, was there anything else, or was that it?
No, Mayor, that was all.
All right, thank you. Commissioner, go ahead.
Just nothing for today's agenda, but I would like to add to a future agenda, specifically the budget agenda, funding for the senior center to support educational and recreational activities within our city, for our seniors. I know other cities do that. And instead of adding it to like a commission meeting agenda, I would like that to be added to the budget agenda.
We will include that in the budget workshops. Was that your intention, Commissioner?
Yes, please.
All right, thank you. Was there anything else? All right, Vice Mayor Turkin, your turn.
No, no changes, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Hay?
No changes for me either.
Okay. Commissioner Kelly?
No.
All right, so for this agenda, all we have so far is the discussion of scheduling the workshops, so we will come to that item very soon. If there's nothing else, may have a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
A motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. The ayes have it. The motion passes. The agenda is so amended. We're going to move on now to our announcements, community, and special events and presentation. The very first one is the announcement of the installation of the Rosenwald School Commemorative Sign for Point Ciana Elementary School. And this is scheduled for Friday, May 12, 2023, at 4:00 PM at Heritage Park. I'm going to ask if the Chair of the Historic Resources and Preservation Board is present or any delegate of the group. Do we have a staff member? Absolutely. Come on up, sir. All right.
Good evening. Mike Rumpf, Planner.
Nice to see you again.
Good to be back. I can give you a short summary. I can answer questions, whatever would please the commission.
I would go for the summary, sir.
Sure. This is something that, this subject was, was a subject of contact between a representative from the Jewish American Society of Historic Preservation and one of the former city managers here about two years ago. And this is something that that organization has been doing around the country, is planting these signs commemorating, recognizing a Rosenwald school. And what does that mean is, back in the early years of segregation, when black schools were underfunded and overlooked with the money that was typically going to other schools, there was a growing philanthropist...
There we go.
...a wealthy individual with a serious enrollment company. Philanthropist.
There we go.
Who wanted to support this underfunded and overlooked resource and need in communities. And he teamed up, and this is just really the 40,000 elevation summary clip notes version of what happened, but really just very simply, he coordinated with Booker T. Washington of the Tuskegee Institute to create a fund, and that provided seed monies for these communities in the South that had underfunded or non-funded black schools. And the Point Ciana Elementary School, back in its early day, was the first one in Palm Beach County to be the subject of these funds, and that's what's being recognized now. It was seed money. Obviously, there was a local effort, a lot of local support that went into creating that school originally in the late 1800s, early 1900s. But then this also provided a more modern brick-and-mortar school that was more sufficient for the needs at that time. And we have worked, collaborated with, we, the board and staff, has collaborated with the Jewish American Society, who is funding this to design it, and they fabricated it, and they are donating it to the city, and they are very, very pleased that we are putting this up in honor of this historic event. With that, do you have any questions?
All right, thank you. Are there any comments or questions for my colleagues? Seeing none on my left, I do, I do see some head nods, which is a good sign. Mr. Rumpf, thank you so much. I look forward to being there.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. The next announcement?
Is there a date?
The date was Friday, May 12, 2023, at 4:00 PM. Again, it's Friday, May 12. And if any members of the community would love, would like, would like to join us, we would love to see you there. The next announcement is that, is that National Small Business Week is April 30 through May 6, and we want to encourage all of you to support all of our local businesses, wherever it may be in the city. They are the lifeblood of our city, and, you know, I've heard it said many times that we are city of small businesses. So make sure you check out our mom-and-pop stores, whether it's on Ocean Avenue in Federal or whether it's on Congress, they are a tremendous asset to our city. The next announcement is a proclamation for Mental Health Awareness and Trauma-Informed Care Month, which is the month of May, as again, mental health awareness and trauma-informed care. This proclamation is to be received by Gerda Klein from the Boynton Beach Mental Health Committee. Let me read the proclamation into the record. Whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and everyone experiences times of stress and struggles in their lives, and one in four adults and one in five youth ages 13 through 18 experiences serious mental illness. 60% of adults and 50% of youth do not receive the treatment necessary for their mental health needs due to limited or no knowledge of the need, barriers to care, or fear and shame. And whereas research recognizes the adverse childhood experiences, are traumatic experiences that can have a profound effect on a child's developing brain and body, and can result in poor physical and mental health during childhood and adulthood. And whereas promoting mental health and wellness leads to higher overall productivity, better educational outcomes, lower crime rates, stronger economies, lower healthcare costs, improved family life, improved quality of life, and increased lifespan. And whereas the city of Boynton Beach recognizes the work of the Boynton Beach Mental Health Committee impacting awareness and education, access to services, and acceptance of the importance of mental health and well-being to a person's overall success, and supports the implementation of trauma-informed approaches throughout the systems of care. Now therefore, I, Ty Penzerga, Mayor of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, do hereby proclaim the month of May, 2023, as Mental Health Awareness and Trauma-Informed Care Month. And I'm going to ask if Commissioner Hay, I know this is a cause that is near and dear to your heart, if you would like to say a few words before we present the proclamation. And of course, if you could join me in presenting this proclamation.
Absolutely. I just want to say that I am very proud of the Boynton Beach Mental Health Committee for the work that they've done in this city. We are now teaming up with other organizations, like a P2P and other organizations, to even do more strategic work for the mentally ill, and recognizing the, the trauma that some of the caretakers go through with issues. And as we look at our TVs and read our newspaper, I'm sure you can all see and, and hear what's going on in our country, and a lot of it has to do with mental illness, mental health. So I am looking for additional support from the city in the future, and the various organizations within our, our city of Boynton Beach. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Gerda Klein here, who has been our golden nugget over the years, has a few words.
Well, on behalf of our dedicated members, I'm really proud to accept this proclamation, and thank you, Mayor Penzerga, for the city's support of the national declaration that May is Mental Health Awareness and Trauma-Informed Care Month, and it's, and your continued support of mental health education and awareness in our community. And I recognize those who were able to make it here this evening to traditionally stand with us for this presentation. This proclamation always signals the start of the countywide Get Your Green On campaign, which has been growing every year. Now, in its seventh year, a large county committee reaches out to hospitals, businesses, cities, schools, and neighborhoods to encourage people everywhere to participate in the showing and wearing of the green, demonstrating support for mental health and engagement in meaningful activities, and thousands wearing green and posing for pictures, which you can do as well. I think 18th is the day, May 18th is the day everybody takes pictures and puts it all on social media. And watch for activities posted on social media as well. Our committee is offering two programs during this month at the city library. The first is a mental health book discussion group on May 31st. This is our third one in a row, and I checked today, and it was only announced a couple of days ago, and it's half-full already. So that's good news. And a workshop on stopping mental health stigma, which I'll be leading on Monday, May 22nd. We're also promoting NAMI's excellent program on Zoom, NAMI in Our Own Voice, that's on May 15th. And Healthier Boynton Beach is offering self-care and mindfulness to our caregivers at their Lunch and Learn on May 17. So we're trying to do our best to keep things going during this month. I want to alert you to important, to, to important new mental health doors in our community that have recently opened, affording us all a combination of hope in the treatment of brain illnesses for today and tomorrow. Neuropsychiatric disorders, including mental behavioral and neurological disorders, continue to be the leading cause of disability in our country. The Stiles-Nicholson Brain Institute at FAU's campus in Jupiter sees the next decade of discovery belonging to neuroscience, and is poised to accelerate the discovery and the translation of novel therapies and treatments that will provide new hope for patients within our communities as well as worldwide. Our committee was well-represented at the institute's ribbon-cutting celebration in January on the campus. The Boynton Beach Committee has taken an active role in welcoming neurobehavioral hospitals by scheduling presentations to community mental health leaders. The hospitals are now serving Palm Beach County in two locations. In the north, the hospitals in West Palm Beach has a Baker Act Emergency Treatment Hospital without patient services. The southern campus is right here, which opened in February and offers specialized hospitals serving adult voluntary patients, and has plans for outpatient services as well. I commend Mayor Penzerga for his warm and enthusiastic welcome when NBH celebrated opening their new doors in February. Our committee has opened an exciting collaboration with Pathways to Prosperity to bring, begin bringing some mental health education to their programming, and we are working with NAMI to help Baptist health meet specific resourcing needs. May we be energized by the hope and the promise of the present and the future to promote education and awareness about mental health, not just in May, but all year round. Thank you.
Thank you. Elise, I'm a peer specialist. There's another one?
Yes. Yeah, we don't got you.
You want to just?
My sister.
You didn't tell me you...
All right, thank you so much. All right, thank you. Next up on the agenda is to recognize the successes of our newly reignited Boynton Beach Police Athletic League. I'm going to ask our city manager if you could introduce the item, and just tell the community, what is this most recent accomplishment, and we'll hear from the group.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'll say, obviously, those of you who come to the meetings regularly know that we reinstituted the Police Athletic League, I want to say, back in October, and that was after a 12- to 13-year hiatus. Between that time, there was a break in, I guess, communication, largely in the community that needed it most. So it was very important to me that I, we reinstituted that, that Police Athletic League, and went to help with the Chief of Police, the commission support, Commissioner Woodrow Hay. We brought Billy Tomei out of retirement, so, whether he wanted to or not. So with that being said, I, I think it's only fitting to bring Billy up to the, to the podium.
Mr. Tomei?
All right. Let's hear why you guys are here tonight.
Okay, well, that's a good question. So first of all, I want to thank everybody here, all the commissioners, City Manager Dan Dugger, and mainly Chief Joe Giuglio, for bringing the power program back, whether you guys came to practice, Mr. Hayes, Turkin, you came out there to see our kids play, or financially, Amy and everybody else, it's teamwork. It started here, like Dan said, four months ago. So now what are we going to do? Well, because we happened to bump into Christ Felso Church, and they asked us what we used to do, well, one of the biggest things we did was take the kids to Brooklyn, New York. We did it for like seven, eight years through the police department. Giuglio was part of that, and so we did it again. So now where are we going to get these kids? Well, we had a basketball league, right? We had 60 kids come out. We picked the top six, seven kids from the league, and then we found some other kids throughout the Palm Beach County, and we put together this all-star team, and they represented the city to the fullest. Okay, so here we are, jumping on the plane. Most of the kids never even left Palm Beach County, never mind jumping on a plane, going to Brooklyn. We got off the, the plane, and we took these kids to Coney Island, right? What's New York City, right? So we had about 12 hours to kill, all right? So we went to Coney Island, went back to our hotel, we had a 9:00 PM game. Traveling all day, guys, since 4:30 in the morning, we had a 7:30 AM flight. So we went to the first game in Brooklyn, and I told these kids, because we're, these guys are good, okay? Half of them are going to college on scholarship. We, we brought a stick, okay? But we knew that, and they knew that. And Brooklyn was ready for us, okay? So for the first game, they heard about us, and they took us to overtime, and they actually got fouled at the buzzer at a half-court shot, so the kid got three shots, and we lost by one, he got all three. So we went back to the hotel, it woke them up, and the coaches had to make some adjustments, and we met that same team after four games in the championship, we won by eight points. So that's why we're here.
All right.
Come on up, Garrett, come on up. Captain Deal? I will say, I want to say a special thanks to Captain Paul Deal. I took him along to Brooklyn, mainly because I needed a bodyguard, and...
Hey, fellas. I love you. Come on.
All right, I'm going to ask if you could all approach. Come on up.
Kickenstein, come on up. We took three police officers, and all my city workers, I got four city employees, guys. That's why this is teamwork. Joe Evans, Joe Matthews, Decarius Jenkins, come on up, guys. Joe Evans, as you know, he's my right-hand man, he's the recreation specialist at Ezel Hester Park. Without him, we don't do anything. And this was, I even bought my driver's. This was my first pal kid, Chris Malavie, I told you about this guy, 30 years ago, the first kid, first basketball player, and now he's a chaperone. We made him a driver up in New York. He got to learn the streets from Brooklyn. He didn't touch nothing, so no accidents. Thank you very much. And Dana Miller, come on up here. So after we win the tournament, we're standing in the gym, the director up there looks at my team and says, all right, guys, obviously you beat everybody, so who was your choice for MVP? And this is who they picked, this guy right here, Dana Miller. Got the MVP. Without him, we couldn't get the ball up court, because New York is quick. And as soon as he got the ball up court, got it to these guys, my big guys, and we took care of business. On a good note, I called him and make sure he was coming here tonight, and he told me yesterday, is it official?
Yeah, don't tell nobody.
Oh, wait. He knows I got the biggest mouth, but he's, he's got, he's got a college, a college offer for basketball, he's going to get full ride, and it's coming down the pike, and he wanted to tell you guys tonight. There's about three other players that are waiting for the call. They'll also be going, and on that note, we had a scout up there take our names, they want to try to get somebody else to a showcase, if they don't get signed, they notice the talent. So we just want to thank everyone for this.
One moment before you all go, we have a little token to show our appreciation and pride for all of you guys. So, City Manager, if you'd like to come on down with us, let's, let's read that into the record first. It doesn't matter.
It says basketball champions, Nacilina McDonald Memorial Foundation Tournament, April 2023, Brooklyn, New York. And it has names on it. And then, this, okay.
We need those names said.
Could have worn me. Tyreek Anderson? All right, okay. Can you guys? Art, Art Quavion? Art Quavion Andrews, Andrews, CJ Beaumont, Jordan Brown, Hughes Camille, Jawan, Jawan Daz. Dayan Humber, Dakarius Jenkins Jr., Jaden Miller, Dean St. Fort, Jacob Sexter, Tony Wade, Program Director, Reserve Officer Bill Tome, Coaches Jordan Becker, Sergeant Candace Kicking Stallion, Captain Paul Deal, Joe Matthews, Joe Evans, Rhea Wright, and Dakarius Shinkin, and the drivers, Chris Malav and, and Mike Bird.
All right, if we could all go with them and present the plaque. Thank you.
Good job, guys.
That's all right.
Oh, we skipped the informational items.
Oh, wow.
You were too excited about the items.
Yeah. Yeah. Good stuff, good announcement.
Good stuff, man. Putting Boynton on the map, again.
I hear my students, they're called, the slang term is young kings. They are young kings. All right, we're going to resume the meeting, and, you know, earlier, uh, we skipped on informational items by members of the city commission. I got all too excited for the announcements, uh, so we're going to go back to informational items. And this time, I'm going to begin on my left with Commissioner Kelly. Commissioner, if you have any items or disclosures or anything of that sort.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have any disclosures, just informational items. I just wanted to thank, uh, city staff for the Earth Day event. Um, and one thing, uh, just a request to staff is maybe we can get an update on that. I feel like that event was a little less attended than it normally is, so I would like some feedback on maybe what we did uh, differently this year from last year, because I just didn't, I was there, and I feel like it was as well-attended as it normally is, so. Um, and then, uh, I also tended and supported the Boynton Beach Firefighters Fishing Tournament and Chili Cook-Off, and that was a great time, judging chili is always a good time, so. Uh, and that's all my informational items. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Um, and I'm now going to turn to Commissioner Haye.
Uh, no disclosures. I just want to say, uh, I did attend the, the Inker, uh, had a special meeting on, uh, yes, today, and, uh, that was informative. And I also attended the, uh, Raising Cane Restaurant Grand Opening, and, uh, that was interesting also. But I would like to, to, in the future, uh, talk with Lego, uh, about, uh, the, the SJ project that I brought up some time ago. Uh, I want to bring that back to the table for discussion.
Happy to talk with you. We can schedule time to go over where we are with the case and what you would like to do.
Good, good. Thank you.
That's it. All right, thank you, Commissioner. I'm going to now turn to Vice Mayor Turk.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I also attended the firefighter chili kickoff fishing tournament. Great event. Um, on that note, I just want to give a huge shout out to Gabby, Eleanor, Marketing Events. You guys have been doing a great job with everything. I know there's been a lot back-to-back, so I really appreciate it. I know it's, uh, super difficult to manage those things, especially when you get a wrench thrown, you know, into your gear, so, you know, thank you for, um, for what y'all do every single day. Eleanor, I saw you at dinner yesterday evening, still working, and, you know, it's, um, 7 o'clock. I mean, that's, that's crazy, so thank you for what you do. Also Candace and Kendra, you guys are awesome for managing our, our scheduler and just, you know, huge shout out to Kendra also, you know, for just making my life easy with all the moving parts, um, especially in this past year. It's been a, been a huge learning year, so thank you for that. Um, I also attended the Palm Beach County Lea, League of Cities, Palm Beach County League of Cities, um, meeting last, last week, and I'm happy to announce that I will be representing Boynton Beach, and I was appointed on the Board of Directors last week, so I'm happy to, uh, represent us at the county level and continue my development and learn more on how it can be beneficial to the community, and, um,
Congratulations, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yeah, it's, uh, thank you. Um, also attended Raising Canes. Great turnout. Um, thank you staff for, you know, helping coordinate that, John Durgan. Um, and, uh, also I want to welcome Lucy. I know you're newly, newly with the, with the Boynton Boca Chamber, so thank you for being in attendance and keeping up with the city. And then, um, last but not least, I want to thank Andrew and Adam Temple for getting right on that lift station that was, um, brought forward and already having that, that problem solved. And, um, another shout out to, uh, Adam and, and his team for, and Chief, uh, uh, Ch, Chief Ruder for attending that, that woman's home who, um, was affected by that tornado, and he got her roof damaged. Uh, thank you for being so prompt with that. Um, you know, it's very unfortunate. I think we got a little lucky compared to Palm Beach Gardens, so I just, you know, super grateful that you guys were super swift in your action there. And, um, that's it. Thank you so much. Oh, one last thing, one last thing, sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, one, one thing that I do want to add to the future, um, in respect to the budget discussions, is have staff, it's okay with my colleagues, is have staff look at potential ways to broaden the exemption for the fire assessment for those who maybe are making a lower income or may have some difficulties for that assessment. I don't know what you guys think about that. I know we, every year, we'll have to address that, so I think, you know, prior to addressing that, if we can look at what kind of ways to expand that.
Uh, Vice Mayor, uh, that is a topic we normally discuss during, uh, the budget workshops.
Okay.
I would, personally, I'd be happy to, you know, have that discussion when we do have that, uh, workshop.
So that's something we can discuss then, and then
We can include that.
talk about what, how that would look like. Okay.
Perfect.
Okay, now I'm done.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, let's go to Commissioner Cruz.
Um, I also attended the, um, Earth Day Celebration at the city. Was able to pick up two trees, so thank you staff for being there for that. Um, also attended the Boynton Beach Firefighters Fishing Tournament and Chili Cook-Off. I think most people were there, and it was a fantastic event. I think that, um, our Boynton Beach Firefighters are really great at putting on events, at making it successful, and at cooking surprisingly well, like, even better than me. So, um, I also attended today the Raising Canes, uh, brand opening in my district. Thank you, John Durgan, for, um, helping put that together. Um, I know it started a little earlier, but that's okay. Still happy to be there. I know that the, um, the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, as well as the Palm Beach County Central Chamber, um, was, um, in attendance as well, so thank you to them for being there. Um, I did have an incident this week in my district where a mother was bit by a dog while she was walking her baby. Um, just want to let my colleagues know, I'm working with the police department to, you know, educate myself more on that, um, area and finding solutions and ways that we can protect, um, people walking the streets and making sure that they're safe, because she was just walking her kid. She didn't even have a dog herself, so something to think about and something that I will be working on, um, and maybe coming back to you guys, um, with a discussion. And that is all I have. Thank you so much.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner. As for myself, as you can hear from my voice, I am still recuperating. Every time I think I'm getting better, uh, I'm just not as lucky as I would like. I suppose it's occupational hazard. Um, I do want to thank staff, uh, for all of your hard work when it came to City Hall Social. If you have never been, it is an event that is designed to encourage more people to be uh, involved with our city, more people to know who we are, for more people to get to know the various departments and what they do. I know, it, part of the issue is just that people don't know that there are people here, and I want to tear down, uh, those barriers, and I think once they learn what we do and all the projects that we're working on, uh, they can see themselves being a part of that. So I, I want to thank staff for making that possible. And I also want to mention, uh, you know, thank you to everybody at Palm Beach State College. As you know, at that event, we, uh, not just commemorated their 90th birthday, but also the launch of our Workforce Readiness Program. Uh, the idea is relatively straightforward, uh, which is, you know, we have people that we want in our city to have the right skills and education so they can be hired, uh, right here by the companies that's right here in our city. And the disconnect is always, we've got companies who are looking to hire people, but they can't hire people because, uh, perhaps they're not meeting this requirement or that requirement. Let's take our people and give them that leg up. This is a pilot program, as I mentioned before, and I'm just very excited to see how this evolves over time, and, and my hope is that, you know, we, we may start off with a small class, but my long-term hope, uh, is that we will see people's lives actually change, giving them new opportunities. Um, and if anyone's wondering, I am COVID and flu negative. Just want to point that out there, um, but I'd just rather be, rather be safe with the mask, uh, than not. Uh, that's it for me, and, uh, thank you so much for all of you. Was there anybody else who had any final uh, informational items or disclosures? All right, seeing none, we're going to move on now to public audience. As always, each person is three minutes. Uh, this is for items not currently on the agenda. After we conclude those in person, we'll go to those online. For those of you online listening, uh, we will take digital hands up until the very last person uh, in the chambers have spoken. Um, and same rules as before. Um, comments must be addressed to the commission as a whole. All right, let's begin. If you would like to speak on any non-agenda items, now is the time uh, to approach the podium. Okay. All right, let's go, uh, check online. IT, do we have anybody online with their digital hands raised?
Mr. Mayor, we have no hands raised.
Wow.
Does we clap?
All right, public comments are now closed. I'm just a little shocked. I don't think that's ever, ever happened before.
Good to see the game.
I see no items under administrative. I just want to confirm, is that correct? No items under administrative in my copy of the agenda?
No, sir, we put that, uh, the only item we had on the administrative section was the appointment of, uh, board members, and we actually tabled that in the future agenda item, and
Where, where are you talking about the scheduling of the dates? Is that not administrative, or were we going to talk about that somewhere else?
Uh, I don't, I don't think we, uh, selected a section where we were actually going to hear that.
Put it under new business.
Okay.
However, it is also administrative, and, uh, counsel, would that be fine?
That's fine. I, I know items. Naturally, we fall under administrative.
Okay.
I was going to clarify what we got here, so.
But I just wanted to make sure there was nothing else, because I know I have a different copy, but
I'll try this one more time. Is Amanda Radigan here?
All right, Ms. Radigan. We are going to now discuss, uh, scheduling items for workshops, various workshops.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioner, Amanda Radigan, uh, Planning and Zoning Director. Um, there's a lot happening in the next few months, um, a lot of it with some, uh, pretty tight time constraints. So there are three things we are looking to schedule, and we do have some tentative dates for some of them. The first, um, and requiring the most, is the park impact fee study. Um, we'll go topic by topic. Um, that, that's the first topic. The next will be mobility, and the last will be live local and housing. So the park impact fee, we are on a pretty tight timeline. Um, we did get a draft of the study back, and the fees are, um, being proposed to be raised past the statute threshold, which requires what's called a, um, extraordinary circumstance. Mike, if I, if I misspeak, please jump in.
I'll jump in. So far, so good.
Um, so, since we are going above that third threshold, which is outlined in state statute, it will require three additional meetings, when typically it would only be required two ordinances. So for this process, we would need to have a public workshop, two extraordinary circumstance meetings, and then the two regular ordinance readings of the item. Um, those are currently tentatively scheduled as follows. So May 30th, we were going to schedule a workshop, and the first extraordinary circumstance meeting at 5:30. On June 6th, at 5:30, we were going to schedule the secondary, um, extraordinary circumstance meeting. And then the first reading will be on June 6th, and the second reading would be on June 20th. What this does do, the way it's currently scheduled, is it pushes back two of the city commission meetings from 6 o'clock to 6:30. We can go item by item, or, or we can move to mobility, or we could move to live local.
Let's stick with this for a moment. Let's just get, um, consensus from
And if I could give just one more piece of information, why this is in, in a rush, um, there is current legislation which changes the definition of circumstance, of extreme circumstances, um, which will go into effect July 1. So if we want to implement the fees as the study proposes them, we would have to have an ordinance adopted by July 1.
All right, uh, Commissioner Cruz, I believe you wanted to say something.
Is there anywhere in the screen where we can see the dates for the meeting that we can, like?
I was about to request the same thing. If you could just show it somebody on the screen, it's easier to keep track of these things.
I believe that they were emailed to you all. I don't have them visually.
Calendar, maybe?
Yeah, can we pull up the calendar for someone? Oh, Manny? Manny? Manny, could you please pull up the calendar?
All right, there's saving the day.
Thank you so much. So again, I'll just run through those dates. We would do on May 30th, which um, if you do have a budget workshop scheduled for that day at 6:30. Um, so at 5:30, we would fit in two half an hour meetings, one for the public workshop, one for extraordinary circumstance meeting number one. So the schedule for that day would go 5:30, Park Impact Fee Public Workshop, 6 o'clock, Park Impact Fee Extraordinary Circumstance Meeting 1, and then 6:30 Budget Workshop, all scheduled on May 30th. Yeah, so also, um, Adam is reminding me to know that the information at those three meetings will be identical. Um, there are no actions required of the commission. Um, we are striving to have a quorum at these meetings, but the purpose of these meetings is really outwardly facing to give a chance for public comment.
Understood. I'm generally comfortable, as long as it's after the school year, I'm good. Um, but I want to hear from my colleagues. Um, anything else, Commissioner Cruz?
Um.
And then we'll go around the days.
Okay, so we need, can you, can you tell me what the um, extraordinary circumstances, you require two of those?
Yes.
What is that?
In the state statute, the way it stands right now, we are, and I'm sorry, it's going to get a little bit technical. But the way it stands right now, there are restrictions on how park impact fees can be increased and by how much. So in order to go outside of those thresholds, the study needs to claim an extraordinary circumstance, and we need to prove it within our study. If that was not the case, if we were comfortable and underneath the threshold, it wouldn't be required. But since we were above that threshold, these extra public meetings are required. So for example, some of the things that will support the extraordinary circumstance is how long it's been since we've updated that fee. Um, the, the rapid redevelopment of downtown and the need for parks are all things that we're folding into the study to support that request.
And, and that would just be an announcement, and it would need to be included. I guess my question would be, is it possible to maybe add that to a commission meeting?
It is not.
It's not.
So legally, they do have to be standalone meetings.
Okay, that was my biggest question.
The statute was changed a few years ago to require all these formal steps to raise these fees.
Got it. Okay.
So the ordinance, of course, could be within the regularly scheduled meetings, but the extraordinary circumstance meeting and the public workshop does have to be separate.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, Vice Mayor, questions, comments? All right. Commissioner, hey?
Good to go.
Commissioner Kelly?
Me last. I'm just kidding. Um, no, I mean, I, because of the situation, because of the extenuating circumstances, you know, I will make the schedule work. It's complicated, but it's fine. It'll work. But I don't, out, my concern is with squeezing it in before a commission meeting and only allowing for an hour for public input. We're then almost forcing the public to potentially show up at more than one meeting if they don't, if a lot of people show up and there's, they don't get to speak, and then they're coming to multiple meetings. And so the point of having, you know, to, so, I mean, those are, that's kind of my concern is that, you know, we're squeezing these in before a commission meeting. Are we allowing enough time for the public to truly have uh, to truly have a voice? Or are we then going to force them to show up at multiple meetings just to have an opportunity? So.
So I will say, um, the layout of these meetings would be that there will be a short presentation by the consultants. Um, I would assume 15 to 20 minutes maximum, and the rest of the time is dedicated to public comment there, and questions, of course, from, from the commission.
Okay. I mean, those are just my concerns, is that we're going to run into a time issue with trying to piggyback these all on top of already existing commission meetings. I understand the, the point of it, but those are my concerns with doing that. And I also don't want to get in a habit of doing that either, because I think it doesn't allow us the opportunity to really have open discussion and not rush discussion if we're trying to squeeze them in before an already scheduled meeting. So but in this situation, I understand the reasons. I talked to Adam at length about it and talked about my concerns, and I understand the, the need due to scheduling and due to the deadline. So I'm okay with it. I'll make it work, but those are my issues and concerns with that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, is there anything else from my colleagues?
Is, is there, is there an alternative to have it prior, like on a Monday?
Ms. Radigan?
We'll have to check everyone's schedule. So these are obviously complex to schedule. We are um, feeling, we would want all of you present, of course. We have to make sure our staff is present. We have to make sure the room is available. We have to make sure the consultant is available. I'm happy to look at some other options, but this was the most feasible um, set of dates in the order that we needed the meetings, unfortunately.
All right, uh, Commissioner Cruz?
I mean, I know you guys have already done a lot of work to try to schedule this, and I know the consultants are busy as well. Um, if we could just keep it as we, as we have it now, and we could potentially um, take as long as we need to do this, and then do the commission meeting after, is that something that's legally permissible?
I believe so. I'll defer to the city attorney.
You would, you would schedule the 5:30 workshop, and then the meeting to start at 6:30 or as soon as the workshop ends.
There we go.
Okay, good, good. That's a good idea.
There's no sense of rushing.
Uh, you can, you can just go right into it if it goes an hour and 15 minutes or whatever. The workshop just goes that, that long.
Perfect.
All right. Thank you. Um, so we have a plan for the park impact. Uh, there's some other items, Ms. Radigan.
So there are two other workshops that we are looking to schedule. Um, first is the mobility workshop. This topic would cover the existing mobility plan, um, the, the draft for the mobility fee, as well as the downtown parking master plan, and possibly some of the traffic overall concerns that have been discussed throughout the last several meetings. Uh, so that is one workshop. And the second one is essentially a review of Live Local and its impact to Boynton Beach. So that one, um, I'll just say that although it doesn't need to be done before July 1st, um, the Live Local Act does go effective July 1st. Um, mobility, there's not necessarily a set timeline. We have reached out to our consultant. Um, he is very busy. He gave us a few dates that would work within the next few months. We have him tentatively scheduled for May 16th. The product for that workshop is largely done because the materials exist, and we've done these workshops with the previous commission before. So we will be revamping them, but that is the, the easiest to, to produce quickly.
Ms. Radigan, um, before you go into further, one of the items that we discuss in this commission is considering uh, these services, these mobility services that could move people around locally.
That is one of the items we plan to talk about within that workshop too. Um, I'm not sure to what detail, because we are talking about it from a planning aspect, but we will give examples of those types of services um, and autonomous versus fixed route. We'll, we'll do a kind of overall planning analysis, and then we, of course, could go into procurement or do a more in-depth company by company information, if you'd like that.
I like both. I want to hear the big picture, and I want to hear what these various companies have to offer, what's different about them. I'm not proposing, nor have I ever, that we need to go 30 vehicles. I'm thinking, let's start with three or four, let's see how that works out and learn from it, and then scale up as needed. So um, just so, you know, everyone's clear where I stand. That is something I'm fully intent to move forward with.
Sure, and that, that we'll work with the city manager's office and probably engineering to get that information for you. That would be outside of the scope of the consultant and mobility planning. And moving a little bit towards procurement, but we can definitely have some of that information with you. Absolutely.
Um, yes, Commissioner.
Um, I wanted to add to that. Have we reached out to the TPA, to the Palm Beach TPA?
I'm sorry, for what?
Have we reached out to the Palm Beach TPA to be present at that workshop? Because I requested that at a previous commission.
The TPA, so this workshop is a review of existing materials. They were part of the development of those existing materials when they were drafted and adopted the first time. So they can be present, but this workshop is really to talk to the commission and the public about any updates we'd like to see within that plan, like the downtown master plan parking. Um, or if there are any changes to um, to the types of projects that are in that plan, or if we'd like to move forward with the mobility fee and at what pace. Um, those are really the things that we'd like to talk about. The TPA has limited involvement in the scope of this plan, but we're happy to reach out and tell them that it's happening and that they're invited to join.
I think it's relevant, absolutely relevant and necessary. Um, and then in addition to that, you know, I think that in addition to the consultant, maybe staff can do a little bit of research. It's, it's city of West Palm Beach has the circuit, right? And they have the, um, they have so many different things.
And there are grants for those types of things through the TPA.
Yes. So can we, I know, I know other cities do it too, but specifically the city of West Palm Beach does a really, really adequate job at mobility and finding alternative modes of transportation. If we could literally go on their website and find out what it is that they do, and then along with the information of the consultant, bringing in Valerie from TPA, I think we could have like a holistic view of all of our options, ways in which we could fund them, and it could just be like.
In the plan. So that's what we want to review the plan with you all for, to make sure that we, there are directions that you want us to follow and directions you might want us to change. So I think the real point of, of showing you the existing materials is to either reconfirm that we are planning in the right direction, multimodal transportation, whatever it is, traffic, concurrency, all of those things, and then follow up based on, on that plan. That plan is the roadmap for the next 20 years for mobility in the city. So absolutely. And I will say, um, circuit transportation, um, um, you know, shuttle services are within that plan. And I will add one note, having a mobility plan is, does get us extra points when we go for these grants at the TPA. That is one of the benefits of having this stuff in a, in a plan.
Good, good. Anything else, Commissioner?
No, Mayor, thank you.
Commissioner Kelly?
Um, my concern, um, Amanda, is this is, I, we're trying to squeeze this in before a commission meeting in two weeks. And I just, what is it realistic? I mean, it, I guess, is it your plan, is that you're just going to present the commission with what our current plan is? And then there's going to be a little bit of discussion, but it's an hour workshop. So if we're, and I, I am, I'm not, I mean, if, what all we've talked about over the last several weeks as far as mobility and what we want to look at, I don't see, think it's realistic to think that we're going to do all of this in a one-hour workshop before a commission meeting on a Tuesday night.
Completely valid point.
So.
Fair.
And I don't, I don't want to rush it either, because I don't think that we're on, I don't think we're on, this needs, it's a priority. I don't think it needs to be on such a high priority that we do this above other things that are more important, like the housing, you know, the Live Local Act and, and those things. So I mean, my position is this is something that we can put off as schedules allow, maybe later in the summer, when things have calmed down, after we've gotten these other things that are a little bit more high priority out of the way. That's just my position on that, but I'm, you know, that's.
Excellent point. Uh, Amanda, just want to confirm, you said this was the one we're not legally pressured, not pressured, but we're not, uh, we don't have that time consideration.
Just, you know, a slight note from staff. We're eager to do this one specifically because this is the, um, kind of the pedestal and how we move forward on some of the decisions we make on mobility. And um, it's been on our docket for about a year since we got uh, this new commission uh, seated. So it is something we would like to get done. As long as it's scheduled, we're happy. Like I said, for us personally, staff, it is the quickest turnaround because a lot of the materials are done. Um, what we were going to do internally is review the old materials, infuse it with some of the current topics that have been discussed, like um, the shuttle services, like, um, you know, all, all of those things that have been talked about, and bring that to you. It could be a series. I will say this is a lot of information, a lot of technical information. Um, we could do a part one, part two, part three. Sometimes I think those are more beneficial, but if.
I think that is the realistic course here. I mean, she's got a great, I mean, we're not going to get it done in one hour. It's too large of a topic.
So that is one, we could do a one, three-hour, which is a lot of information. We could do a series of smaller ones. I mean, I'm open to any of it. Um, we would just have to, of course, coordinate with our consultant because it is largely led by him, especially the mobility, the mobility fee portion.
All right, so Commissioner Cruz, and then we'll go to Vice Mayor.
Yep, um, even though we don't have the July deadline for this mobility workshop, we do have a deadline to apply to grants within the TPA, and even though that's not specific for that, um, it's a huge topic, as, as you mentioned before, and you're right, there's no way we could cover it in an hour. Um, and I, I agree with the mayor, maybe doing it like a one, two, three workshop. Um, but I do want to add to that workshop, like understanding what are our options, because, you know, I've wanted to have, and I apologize with work, I really haven't been able to have these meetings with staff, but if we could figure out um, a way to to know like what our opportunities are within the TPA and work. I know, I know we've talked about this so many times, um, but I, I would like to see action being taken in that direction, because um, as I mentioned before to staff, like last year, every municipality that applied to these grants received the money, which means that if 100% of the people that applied got the money, then we missed out on an opportunity, and we don't want to do that again, so.
What I would be happy to do is invite Valerie to do a 10-minute talk on the TPA grant opportunities, how they're organized. I think that would be a great addition to this series. We can schedule it within mobility workshop number one, or number two, or number three. I think that um, if, once we get an idea of what we have as the city right now, it'll be easier to see what projects in that plan we could potentially request funding for.
Yeah, but even more than that, I think if we could have staff like communicate with the TPA, um, because they do, they do actual like workshops for municipalities specific to grants. So if we could have that before the workshop, and you can tell us the outcome of that meeting, I think that we could save a lot of time, and it could be more of an efficient presentation at that point.
Sure, so staff, just, just so you know, the, the staff committees, we, we do sit on them. So we have the Vision Zero Grant, which one of my staff members sits on. Um, the actual TPA grant, I believe, the city engineer sits on. Um, so they are a part of it. I got emailed from them to review their long-range transportation plan, so we are fairly involved.
I know, but what I'm, I'm specifically referring to the city of Boynton Beach and TPA workshop in order to apply to a grant. So we can decide what direction we want to take and where we want to, like what road specifically we want to apply to get funding for.
That's the mobility plan.
Yeah.
So the mobility plan outlines a series of projects that have been um, discussed through need-based assessment for that plan. There are 64 projects built into that plan, some of which would get funding from the state, some of which would get funding from the county, which is why I'm suggesting a review of that plan in a holistic way to make sure those projects are priorities. Um, we support the need for those projects. At that point, it becomes very easy to take one of those projects and move it towards grant funding. If I am missing anything, please reach out to me. I'll be happy to get you whatever information I, I may be missing now.
All right, Vice Mayor?
Um, no, I just kind of want to piggyback with what Commissioner Kelly was saying. This is a lot of information. We're talking about having an additional workshop before this workshop. And I, I don't think an hour is suffice. I don't want to rush into something like this because it is crucial. There is a lot of moving parts. Um, are, are we going to have the CRA get involved as well with this? Is that, is that a possibility, have them work in collaboration with you all?
I'm, they're, they're always invited to. This is a city plan, however. I mean, I will say, any projects that are within the CRA boundaries, of course, we are collaborating on funding sources with the CRA and making sure that they are within either city CIP or their work plan. So yes, that, that is happening.
Yeah. Vice Mayor, I got a meeting set up with the, the CRA director in regards to that.
Okay.
So I'll just, I'll ask her then, whenever I have my meeting. It's in regards to a circuit, which is another one of those uh, providers that is also servicing now the city of West Palm.
Awesome, awesome. Yeah, that, you actually got to my next point. Um, thank you, city manager. Um, but yeah, I, I don't think an hour is suffice. I mean, we've had six-hour workshops before, or the series. I'm open to either, we all work full-time jobs on top of another full-time job, it seems like. Except for you, Commissioner, you're enjoying your retirement.
He's lucky.
But um, so I'm. But, um, so I'm, I'm open to either. I just do not want to rush this. I don't think it's good government to rush this. So, you know, whether it's series or just having a three hour workshop, I'm open to be flexible and make my schedule work for what's, what's best for all of us.
Sounds good. Flexible as well, and I can agree more. So can you, anything else, Amanda?
So the last thing that we don't have scheduled is the housing. Um, I will say that this can be done at a city commission workshop if the commission chooses. It will be, I won't say brief because it's a loaded topic, of course, but I would imagine a five to 10 minute presentation where we'll talk about a review of what is within the legislation. We will obviously tag team it with the city attorney's office. Um, and then we all go over, um, a kind of point and impact analysis. If we don't want to do a separate workshop for that, that is something that we could include into a city commission agenda. Hopefully we'll pick a late agenda. Um, otherwise we could do it before a meeting or we can schedule something outside. So this is, this is not scheduled. Like I said, it does go effective July 1.
All right, Commissioner Kelly?
Is this, Amanda, is this something that you're, I mean, I'm just thinking we have our strategic planning workshop on May 13th on a Saturday and it probably, if this is something we could even, if you're prepared for it and you would be prepared to kind of piggyback on that strategic planning when, you know, that might be a good opportunity to to have that presentation.
I will be by, by then. So again, we will, um, I, I don't know how it would have to be notified or advertised, but if we are going to do it in a workshop setting, we'd want to at least advertise it the same way we do a city commission meeting. But the materials are close to being done. Um, so I feel confident we could get it done for May 13th.
Yeah, I'm just, I mean, I'm just throwing it out there. I don't, um, I was just thinking it's a meeting that we already have kind of open-ended because it's a Saturday. We're a little bit more flexible. So, um, but I'll defer.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Cruz?
Sorry. Um, that's a great idea, Commissioner Kelly. Um, unfortunately, that's Mother's Day weekend and I will be here in the morning for the workshop, but if we could just not do it that day because I really want to spend the weekend with my mother if I can, and my brother's coming into town. Um, he only comes in like once or twice a year. So, and I just found out about it, but I will be there in the morning if that's a, obviously. But if it's a possibility for us to do it at a commission meeting or any other Saturday, I will spend the whole day here. I don't mind. It's just Mother's Day. It's a special day and I really want to make sure that I'm there for, you know, for that.
We won't need a full Saturday. Okay. So like I would expect at maximum a 10 minute presentation.
So why don't we just add it to a future agenda, like in June? If it, if it's in July, why don't we add it to the first meeting in June?
If, Ms. Rottigan, if you sincerely believe that can be accomplished in that period of time, uh, then I would be comfortable with that suggestion, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Yeah, I agree. I mean, let's not take up all of Mother's Day.
We could do June 6th or June 20th. Is there a preference?
First one, if it's ready, if that's okay with you.
We'll target June 6th.
Is there something else going on on June 6th?
No, I was just going to suggest that we could just direct the city manager to work with Amanda and find whatever meeting is going to be kind of light so that we don't have a bunch of heavy stuff because there may be agendas that are in draft that we would know where we have a little bit more time to talk.
Absolutely. We'll, uh, we'll include it on something that's a little, I, I don't really foresee over the next, uh, probably three or four meetings that we have any heavy agenda meetings like Town Square or anything like that. It's going to push us to midnight or 2:00 AM. So.
The PND board for May is canceled, which usually means in the development world, we're light the next month. When it comes to commissions, we won't have very long public hearings at least. So I'll, I'll work this.
Yeah, that's feasible.
Okay. Thank you so much. Is there anything else that you need from me?
None for myself. Well, thank you. One more, one more, Commissioner.
On the mobility, do we, did we need to give them any direction as far as timeframe that we're looking at?
Amanda.
As a commission to give you some direction as far as when on our calendars, we wanted them, because we said it wasn't something we wanted to rush and it wasn't something that needed to be like in the next two weeks, but where on our calendars do we, for mobility?
So I wrote down that we will be doing part one on the 16th. Am I incorrect? And then do a series or did we want to relocate that to a different?
I got the impression of doing a series. Were you comfortable with the 16th or no? Okay, if that was a no, it's.
Wait, I mean, question.
It's okay. Not, I mean, we can always get, again, the mobility is the one we're not in a rush for. We're not legally constrained in terms of this.
I would rather not get in the habit of piggybacking these on commission meetings. That's my opinion.
All right.
We have three now in a row.
Are you comfortable with a Saturday?
So to, just to make sure, we only have one meeting currently that we'd be impacting the city commission meeting. It would be the
But we have a strategic planning meeting on the 30th, so we're impacting a meeting there. We're impacting a meeting.
We're stacking meetings.
We're impacting a meeting on the 20th or, so we have several meetings that we're piggybacking. So, right? Isn't there one on the June 20th or?
Oh, that would just be a regular city commission meeting. So we would be, the way it stands now, it would be impacting the 16th city commission meeting if we keep mobility on there. The budget workshop would be at 6:30. And then June 6th, city commission meeting would start at 6:30. So it'd be impacting, again, if we keep mobility on the 16th, we'd be impacting two city commission meetings and the budget workshop. But that isn't a typical, it's on a day that we wouldn't be having city commission. So it'll be a special meeting.
Right. No, I know, but it's, that's three meetings, that's three Tuesdays in a row that we are.
Yes. Yeah. So I would prefer not to do it on the 16th. That's my thought.
But I will go with the consensus of the board.
No, I, I support you, Commissioner. I mean, you make a good point. I don't want to make a habit of doing that. Uh, Saturday mornings I'm comfortable with, uh, if my colleagues are okay with that. All right. So we'll, we'll let the city manager work it out with staff precisely when. Again, this is the one we're not in a legal, uh, timeline constraint.
I just need clarification. If you guys do it on a Saturday, you're not going to get, need three meetings, correct? That was in reference to actually doing three separate meetings with a one hour timeframe. If you, can you guys get through it all on one Saturday or are you going to need three Saturdays?
No, I think we can do it, a, a workshop Saturday, and then if there's any follow-up, we can then talk about where we would do any follow-up. That would be my.
So my, my first email will be to the consultant to see if Saturdays will work. And then I will work with the city manager's office from there. If Saturdays won't work for, um, him, then we'll get a list of availability for the next couple of months.
Perfect. Okay.
And thank you. Uh, Vice Mayor?
And Amanda, there's going to be public input on this mobility.
The, the commission has the ability to request public input at any of these workshops.
Okay. I think, I think that's important.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Perfect. Yeah, I'm flexible. Whatever we want to do.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. That was a lengthy discussion on scheduling, absolutely necessary, but I can only imagine how it sounded like on the other side.
One, one, one more thing to add, one more thing.
Oh, man. All right. Come on up.
Oh, there, there is also options to, uh, send surveys out to the public as well. I know we've done that in the past. So if that's an option you guys want to see in order to kind of minimize the amount of, um, public input at the specific meetings to make it a little bit more efficient, we could also explore surveys. So we'll have that information.
No, for which part?
I want to say all of them, for the most part.
I think it's a good way to actually get more input than we normally would get at a workshop.
And we can kind of, uh, what we can do is we can layer them as far as like levels of importance, similar to how we did the, uh, the park impact study or the, uh, park study.
Sounds good. Thank you. That concludes administrative. We're now moving on to consent agenda. Are there any items that my colleagues would like to pull from consent? Commissioner Kelly, which item?
Mayor, I would like to pull 6E, please.
6E? All right. Is there anything else from any of my colleagues? Seeing none, may have a motion to approve the remainder of consent agenda.
So move.
We have a motion from Commissioner Hay. I heard a second from Vice Mayor Turkin. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, the ayes have it, motion passes. Now we're going to turn to item 6E, proposed resolution number R23-053. Approve ARPA sub recipient partnership agreement with Imagine Chancellor Charter School for their school food service support project in the amount of $10,000. Uh, Mr. Durgan, if you'd like to introduce the item.
Yes. Uh, good evening, John Durgan, economic manager. Uh, this item is just having the city commission approve, um, ARPA, um, ARPA funds in, in the amount of $10,000 to Imagine Chancellor Charter School. Um, the funds will go to their school food service, um, support project, which is essentially, um, free and reduced lunches. The families that they have current outstanding balances for those free and reduced lunches, I believe 68% of the students at Imagine Chancellor are on a free and reduced lunch. Um, so this money will go directly to paying off the outstanding balances for those free and reduced lunches. Um, I'm not sure if, if Principal Stanley is on, but I'm, I'm here on behalf of.
She's supposed to be. I, that's what I heard. And that was the reason, that's the reason I pulled it. You know, this is something when, when, um, when John, when they did, the city did the initial grants to schools and they reached out, um, Imagine was one that wasn't, um, on the list. And so I reached out to them. I have friends who, uh, work there and have students there. And so I reached out to them and, um, got them to apply and they got overlooked when then our focus went to public schools. And so, you know, thank you. I brought this up at the last meeting. Thank you for your support and bringing this back. And, um, you know, they're, they're a non-traditional school, but you know, the school, uh, you know, services the majority of students are Boynton Beach residents and teachers are Boynton Beach residents. So, um, I think it was important that we, uh, that we, you know, support them in their ask, uh, when it came to this original application. So, um, her name is Stephanie Stanley, and I believe she was planning on being remote. So, um, she just wanted to recognize the city.
And do we have her?
Principal Stanley, yourself muted. Thank you.
Hi, yes. Good evening, everyone. Um, thank you. We would greatly appreciate, um, this, this support, um, financially for, for our families. We're, you know, proud, proud, um, uh, you know, residents and, and supporters of the city. And, um, we believe, you know, with some of our, our students that the families are in economic disadvantage to pay some of the, um, bills because we weren't approved, um, for the months of August through October. So we want to, we're looking for all, um, financial grants and things like that so that they would not have to, um, pay those balances for those, those families. So we would greatly appreciate this to support our kids. We thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments for the principal or for Mr. Durgan? Seeing none, may have a motion to approve item 6E?
A move.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Kelly and a second from Vice Mayor Turkin. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none.
Commend you, Commissioner Kelly, for, for doing that.
Thank you.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those who oppose say no. The ayes have it, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Durgan, and to our guest online.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh, 7A, this is consent bids and purchases over $100,000. Would anyone like to bring this, this item for discussion? If not, may have a motion to approve item 7A. I heard a motion from Commissioner Cruz. Was there a second?
Second.
Uh, second from Commissioner Kelly. Um, anything else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those who oppose say no. The ayes have it, motion passes unanimously. We're now moving on to item 10A. This is continued discussion and selection of, uh, the Ukraine sister city. Do we have someone from staff to reintroduce this item? Otherwise I'll turn to, oh, I'm so sorry. Uh, thank you so much for bringing that to my attention. 8A, 8A, this is proposed ordinance number 23-008, second reading, employee handbook. I'm going to turn to counsel.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city commission, I'll read the title. This is ordinance number 23-008 in ordinance to the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending chapter two administration, article 10, personnel policy manual of the code of ordinances to update the employee handbook, FKA personal policy manual of the city of Boynton Beach, provided for conflicts, severability and an effective date. And this is a public hearing.
Thank you. I see our, uh, HR directors here. Mr. Costi, good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor and Commissioner, Tenille DeCoste, Human Resources Director. There are only one change in the employee handbook. There was a script notes area in definitions and I had to correct that. That's the only change. Everything else is the same in the presentation.
All right. Thank you. Any questions or comments for the HR director? All right. We're going to turn this, oh, Vice Mayor, were you about to say something?
Dish, thank you again, Tenille. This is a, an overhaul. So thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Anything else? All right. Public comments on this item is now open. If you would like to speak on item 8A. Now is the time to approach the podium and for those of you online, we'll come to you at the end of the last person in the chambers. No public comment on this item, specifically on this item. All right. I see one person approaching the podium. Could you turn on the microphone, sir? Or could someone assist him?
Okay, thanks. My name is Thomas Jerry Thibault Jr., but most known as Nature, N-A-T-U-R-E. I, um, uh, but I've, I've been given the plateau, the, uh, owner of the plantation. Jesus came out of the spiritual realm in 91 and took a seat to write him in physical realm for his last day in hell, the third, third day. We're in that thousand year ring right now. But I, I apologize that I missed the public comment. And I want to just send a shout out, hopefully. I'm not going to use up to three minutes. But, uh,
Sir, uh, please wrap it up. This is public comment specifically for this.
I missed, I missed the public.
And that's unfortunate, but if you want to say your piece quickly.
I'm, I'm here to get everybody healthy. I'm here to make paradise happen for real. No belief. Okay. I would like the commissioner's help. I really would.
All right, sir.
I guarantee you, you would, you would like my proposals. I, I draw at Fitz Depot. Anybody can help me to get my proposals together and get them presented to the commissioners.
I appreciate your comments. However, it's not on topic. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anybody else who would like to speak specifically on the employee handbook proposed ordinance? Seeing no one else, could we go online? Manny, do we have anybody with their digital hands raised?
Mr. Mayor, we have no hands raised.
All right. Public comments on this item is now closed. If there's nothing else from my colleagues, I'm going to ask for a roll call, city clerk. May have a motion first and we'll begin the roll call. That was, that was happened so quickly. Who was first? Um, I believe it was Commissioner Cruz who made the motion, who made the second on my left. Commissioner Hay? All right. And city clerk, please proceed.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Hay?
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Turkin?
Yes.
Mayor Penzerga?
Yes.
And a roll call vote, the motion passing unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Just double checking city manager report, and then we're going to move on to 10 unfinished business, 10A. Continued discussion and selection of Ukraine sister city. Do we have someone from staff to reopen this item? Then I'll turn to Vice Mayor. All right. Was there someone from staff? If not, we'll turn to.
Mayor, I know, I know Catherine was spearheading this and Svetlana, the, um, the sister cities delegate, um, I'm not sure if she's on this evening or not. And so what I'd like to know from my colleagues, do y'all want to keep this on the table until we have Catherine come back in a point of reference for questions or more information prior to making a decision? I think that might be, it'd be helpful for me. I don't know how y'all feel.
Yeah, well.
What is the reason for not being here tonight?
Uh, I, I think she's on well deserved time off, uh, with her family.
Okay.
And so I don't know, I don't know if I, I'm, I'm okay to move forward. I, you know, I just.
I just don't want to hit and miss. I, you know, but if there's a reason, I have no problem with it.
Yeah. I, I, I think, I think, you know, it was tabled last meeting. I think it may have just, it's unlucky timing with Catherine being out and, um, maybe there wasn't a correspondence between prior to her leaving.
I have no problem in keeping it tabled to us till certain time.
Okay.
You go ahead.
Yeah. No, I think it makes sense. I'd rather know that we have the Ukrainian representative from sister cities online for any questions that we have that may come up when we're talking about the different cities. And so I'm, I'm fine with that. I'll support whatever you want to do, uh, Vice Mayor.
Okay. Keep it on the table.
I missed the first. Um, I missed the first few seconds, Vice Mayor. Are you, are you recommending we keep it on the table until Catherine comes back?
Yes, sir. Yes.
All right. Sounds good. Any other further comments? If that's, if that's the case, we'll leave it tabled and we'll just move forward to, uh, the next item. Uh, next item is 10B, discussion on American Rescue Plan funds. Uh, staff will provide an overview. Our finance director is here. Uh, the ARPA expenditures to date and funds still available, as well as an overview, infrastructure priorities for the commission to discuss. And then we will provide direction. Thank you, Mara.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Mara Frederickson, Director of Financial Services. Tonight I'm going to go through, um, just some brief highlights on the American Rescue Plan Act. And then I also have Ms. Punam Kalkat and Mario Guzman, our Public Works Director and Utilities Director, who are going to cover some infrastructure projects at the end of the, uh, presentation. Next slide, Manny, please. The funding objectives for American Rescue Plan are to support the COVID-19 response efforts to replace lost revenue for state, local, um, and territorial tribal governments to support the immediate economic stabilization for household businesses and address the systemic public health economic challenges. Next slide, please. According to the treasury rule and noting that these are federal dollars, restrictions on the uses are as follows. Um, direct or indirect offset for reduction in tax revenue, a settlement agreement or judgment, a deposit into any pension fund, any federal matching requirements, going into the federal financial reserves, payment of debt service, and any infrastructure not directly addressed in the American Rescue Plan Act. Next slide, please. The five community assessment priorities that were initially paired in the Masting Spender, Spending Plan with the American Rescue Plan priorities are as follows. The economic stability and resilience, which we have spent $444,200 of the $2 million we allocated. Housing affordability and homeownership, we have spent $604,000 of the $2 million we allocated initially. Educational opportunities and job skills, we spent 1.2 million of the 1.5 that we allocated. Healthcare access and health outcomes, we've spent 395,000 of the 1 million originally allocated. And criminal justice and safety is 405,000 of the 500,000 that we allocated. And in one of the later slides, I will go through kind of what we spent those funds on. Next slide, please. Oh, he has it up. The eligible uses. So, American Rescue Plan broken into five funding priorities. Those are public health, economic hardship, revenue loss, premium pay, and then water sewer and broadband infrastructure. Next slide, please. Supporting the public health response is one of the priorities, uh, that the American Rescue Plan, the commission can support. Some of those would be mitigating and containing the COVID-19 emergency, any type of medical expenses, addressing long-term and, and short-term effects on COVID-19, behavioral healthcare, and public health and safety. Next slide, please. Another major funding priority of the American Rescue Plan is to address negative economic impacts from the global health pandemic. Funds can address workers and families, small businesses, hardest hit industries, and rehiring of public sector staff. You'll notice a large amount of the city's funds have been allocated this way, and I'll show that in how we spent the funds later on. So the city received $13,647,000 in May of '21 and May of '22. It was broken into two different, um, tranches. We can use the funds, um, for anything that occurs between March 31st and ending December 20, December 31st, 2024. The funds need to be allocated by December 31st of 2024 and spent by December 31st of 2026. So this is a breakdown of how we have spent the funds currently so far. So revenue losses, 3.9 million. Public health, 395,000. Negative economic impact is 3.1 million. Premium pay was 1.5 million, and administrative costs were 52,000. So total of the 13 million has been allocated as 9,62,000. That leaves us about 4.5 million. As you'll notice at the bottom of this slide, I am anticipating using revenue losses again for next year's budget of about 2.7 million, leaving you about 1.8 left of the 13 million. With that being said, I'm going to move on to some of the different projects that we have available for infrastructure to utilize towards those funds.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, my esteemed colleagues, and members of the public. My name is Mario Guzman, Director of Public Works. I wanted to talk about our current road projects, kind of our analysis where we're at now, because this played a part in our recommendations. So quick, uh, overview of that. Southwest 8th, 18th, Boynton Beach, Leisureville, District One, that was one of the projects, paving, these are paving projects that we had that was completed. Uh, some of the projects on Seacrest Court, Northeast Second Street, uh, to Northeast Second Court, District Two, that was completed. Um, we have another project in District Two that was completed as well. Uh, Northeast 11th, 12th, 13th Avenue, those are in process as we speak. And we are currently getting surveys for Southwest Eighth, which is Wilbright to Boynton Beach Boulevard, and also getting surveys for Lake Boynton Estates. Um, I mean, you can see the breakdown of the districts there. Um, these were the roads that were in F and D conditions. Some of the balance that we have is, okay, let's attack the F roads. That's kind of the obvious. But we also look at the D roads that are main vessels and pipelines, and what makes the biggest bang for the buck. Aside from that, we might have a community that has, you know, um, instead of going street by street, we'll try to hit up communities. So that's just a little bit of methodology of how we go about paving streets. So, and then we also have the Sandcastle area, which those are F rated roads. But because we had that grant, and we have a big drainage project coming forward, these are things that are in the pipeline. So that's just an overview of what's, what's in the pipeline, what's being moved. Um, next slide, please. That's just kind of a visual of the different projects.
Um, So Lake Boynton Estates. Um, that is six, correct? That is west of, um,
By the Home Depot.
That's, um, that's Southwest Eighth Street. Is that what you're talking about? Southwest Eighth Street?
Yeah.
Okay. So is, is that the same project? Cause there's one, there's Old Boynton Estates, and then there's Lake Boynton Estates.
I can clarify on that.
Okay.
I'm Gary Denmeyer, City Engineer. And so, yes, that is one large project.
Okay.
But there is a survey for Southwest Eighth independently and the overall.
Split.
Lake Boynton Estates.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Thank you.
So these are the roles that are in, that's the condition that they're in, and that's in the works now as we speak. Um, next slide, well, the slide you see right there, that's kind of a visual of the streets we intend on addressing this year. Um, next slide. So now for our recommendations. Uh, this was brought up previously, uh, and this was Cherry Hill, Ridgewood area. And it's, and our paving projects, just so you know, include traffic calming initiatives. So even though they're not stated, it's, it's there. Um, and that could be speed humps, speed tables, things of that, that nature. Um, so for the Cherry Hill, Ridgewood area, um, we're recommending paving of the streets marked, and aside from that sidewalks, uh, yellow are the current sidewalks. Green is our recommended sidewalks. And the main driver by this was definitely the community, brought us to our attention. Um, and we just want to increase connectivity and walkability, especially to the Galaxy Elementary. And that project roughly with today's cost, about 1.5 million. I always, you know, give that little asterisk. We'll know the pricing once it goes out to bid and we get those numbers back. Then aside from that, after looking at all different streets, um, as you can see Cherry Hills, one of recommendations, Chapel Hill Boulevard, um, not a high, uh, value, um, uh, project, but it's one of those projects of the main corridors in our, in our city. Uh, that's a smaller project, 250,000. We also have Boynton Lakes Meadows. It's about a million dollars for that project. The main driver for that was Boynton Lakes. Uh, that area, that street is in a D rated condition. Last time we reviewed, probably closer to an F. And then we're also recommending Gateway Boynton Ridge for about $800,000. So that is just kind of the, uh, overview of the projects we're recommending. Um, assuming some get funded, that would be great. If they do not get funded, you guys are seeing a sneak peek into what we're going to request for the budget for the capital improvements.
All right. Mario, is, is any of the funding can be used or is it included here for speed bumps and some, on some of those streets that you?
If it's something that I stated here, if it's these projects, um, it is part of the project.
It is.
It is part of it. Now, speed humps is a component of it. There are other traffic calming measures that we do on the roads.
Gotcha.
So speed tables, narrowing lanes, all those kinds of things. So if it's listed here, it's includes that.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Mario, if you could just come back.
I'll just be up here. I saw, um, in the first part of the presentation, I saw 18th Street and Leisureville, and that was already completed, right?
Correct.
All right. That's it. That was my question. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, and City Manager, and everybody else who's here. Punam Kalkat, Utilities Director. In the way we approached, uh, this, about what, which infrastructure projects should be really asked for, for ARPA money, we looked at things that were not already scheduled in the CIP, so we don't have it budgeted. And we were looking for projects that were value wise, would fit in with what was left from the ARPA funds, and could still give us, uh, enough man for a buck in the sense of being able to fix a problem. So I have four projects that I've listed up there. Um, two of the projects are in District Two, Laurin Hills and Northeast 15th Place. And these are both projects that are for water main pipe bursting. And this is a trenchless way of doing things. So you can put things, you put a bigger pipe, and then you can burst the inside, the pipes, inside pipes, so that you don't have to cut, uh, open cut. So it's less disruptive, it's faster, it's a little bit less costly. So two of these projects, one is for over 600,000, another for 150,000. Next slide. The other two projects that we are saying could be possibly, yeah, use, use these funds for, one is Palm Beach and Boynton Beach Leisureville, District One. Um, both of these projects are District One projects. Uh, one is sanitary sewer cured in place pipelining. And what just, what that means is similar to what I was talking about with pipe bursting. You put a pipe in, you cure it in place with under pressure and heat, and then you're able to have a pipe within a pipe. It's just a smaller pipe, becomes slightly smaller, but it's a less costly way of doing stuff. And there are lots of pipes in Leisureville area and, uh, Commissioner Cruz. And I've been there, talked to some of our, um, residents. And we're continuing to work through these projects slowly, but this would be a bigger project than we could. And these are all estimated costs, just like Mario said, we don't know until we bid. But these are based on projects we've just completed, uh, some of the projects we've completed. So we've taken smaller areas and continue to do this all the time. And the last one is Gulfview Harbor, um, which is just putting some, installing some of the cleanouts. These are for sewer lines. Um, we have some areas in the city that don't have cleanouts, uh, or, so it's very hard to go back and fix things, um, when there's no city cleanout. So when we go to a residential cleanout, a private cleanout, sometimes when you're going to use pressurized, um, way to clean that, you can actually have the sewer going to people's homes. So we avoid doing that. So trying to have city cleanouts in most places helps us keep these pipes, maintenance of these pipes better. So those are the four projects we are proposing could be used, either parts of the money for different projects or one of the projects. Any questions I can answer?
Thank you. Were you finished with your presentation? All right. Thank you. This is either going to be an easy conversation, uh, more likely a very difficult conversation, uh, because all of these funding requests are all important. Um, and we all want to help as many people as we can, residents and communities. And, you know, one of the reasons I asked staff to bring back their priority list is so we could narrow it down. We know we have limited funds, and there are more requests than there are funds. Um, I just want to start the conversation by just throwing out a couple of questions. The first one is, uh, to our Finance Director, Ms. Friedrichson. You know, you say here in the, on the spreadsheet, we have 1.87, uh, remaining. But that assumes that we allocate 2.7 million for revenue loss.
It does.
Is that absolutely necessary? And what would you have done otherwise if you didn't have these funds?
Um, so we are just really on the beginning parts of our budget. So the 2.7 million is an estimate as to what we would need towards the budget. I would honestly tell you, we will likely need additional funds, um, and are going to be looking to cut expenses in other places or using fund balance to balance the budget, so.
Um, I'm struggling to, I understood what you said, but I am struggling to, uh, to accept that.
Right.
Uh, for obvious reasons, because the natural question is, you know, we have a deadline for when to use these funds, and they're limited. So what about the year after? Uh, and the year after that, what is the plan? Because, you know, A, I, I want to know what's happening, but B, the difference is, we have 1.8 if we allocate the 2.7 as revenue loss or to fill the revenue loss. But if we hadn't done that, or if we don't do that, we would have 4.57, which is a significant difference. So I, I just want to know the necessity of this, uh, and what the plan is moving forward, because obviously this isn't going to last forever.
Right. And like I said, we're at the beginning stages of the budget. So whether that 2.7 is entirely necessary, I can't give you a full scope of what that looks like. Um, you know, would it assist with the budget? Absolutely. Um, but you know, I don't have, but the tax revenues are coming in yet. Some of the state shared revenues, I won't get some of those numbers until June. So really to estimate what I'm going to need, um, you know, and well, balance the budget as we always do. I mean, we'll figure out the expenses and, you know, determine some of the revenues. If we have to push out some projects, we can do that as well. So there's a way to balance it. If the commission chooses not to use the 2.7 million, we would absolutely figure out the budget in another way.
All right. Well, I just have to ask, um, so we have a full understanding, the full picture. Um, my next question is for all of the proposed items, either from, uh, you know, any of the road improvements or the utilities, which of those cannot be funded by other means, or we don't have currently funding of other means? Because what I don't want to do is spend the money on something that we could, uh, use CIP for, or we're already planning to do that, or we already have a grant in progress. You know, does that make sense? Um, so let me just start with that, and then we'll take it from there. So this way we can kind of narrow it down some more, because these are great ideas. Again, the money can only go so far.
Yeah. Fortunately for us, we have an infinite amount of projects. So, um, yes. Depending on the district and the location, we could look at, uh, CBDG funds, um, for some of these. Uh, and as for FAR CIP, the same methodology that we're having here is the same methodology that we have when it comes to CIP. There is an infinite amount of projects. And once Mara lets us know how much we're getting from the surtax, we have to try to combine as much. So, um, to answer your question, we're going to go through the same process when it comes to CIP. Um, if some of these get funded, it would alleviate and allow for other projects to be completed. And then depending on, um, depending on the district, we're looking at, you know, some, some CBDG funds. Um, the team is working with, uh, the TPA, some TPA grants. We have some things lined up this year. So, but those are all, you know, up in the air. But, um, yeah, we have an infinite amount of projects that we'll try to, we'll try to go through them one by one.
Uh, microphone.
For the utility projects, um, yes, we have a CIP, but our CIP again is pretty, um, lengthy and a lot of cost in there. And our revenues are not really increasing as the infrastructure needs are. We are looking for grants. We are looking for loans. Um, so we are looking at other means to fund some of the, uh, infrastructure needs that we need to fund. And we also have our reserves, cash reserves that we, for the utilities, that every year when revenue comes in, we put some aside for R and R, and, uh, the rest goes into cash reserves. But last couple- But last couple of years, we've had to go into those cash reserves to make our balances, uh, to balance our budgets. So it is, it is going to be a little bit of hard decisions that we'll have to make, um, in the, in these years. We will continue working with whatever money we have. If it's smaller, couple of areas that we can do, then that's how we work. And if we can get a bigger grant or bigger funding, then we can move forward with, uh, more, um, bigger projects. A more extensive project.
Just two more questions, just to give more information to my colleagues, and I'll pass it off. Which, and this goes to both, you know, both teams here, which of these are time-sensitive? So for example, uh, whether it's these water main pipe bursting projects, are there projects that need to happen within the next two to three years? What is critical? Because we need to address those first, because we, what we don't want to do is not invest money in these areas. And all of a sudden, we have a water contamination problem, or whatever the case may be, right? So do we know what are the more time-sensitive, time-critical projects that need to be done, addressed relatively soon? And separately from that, but related, which is, which of these projects take ten, fifteen years to accomplish? Which of these take a couple of years to accomplish?
So for the utility projects that we proposed, we looked at that timeline. We knew that we had to end up using these, uh, this money within a certain time. So we went with only projects that we knew did not, would not take a lot of time to design or construct. So we really came back with projects that we knew that we could do it within the two years. Criticality-wise, we, it's a constant evaluation. We do condition assessments, knowledge from the staff, any of the breaks in that area, any depressions we are seeing. So we look at all of those things and continue working. Unfortunately, sometimes emergencies do happen. We're really trying hard so that those emergencies don't happen, and we can do preventive stuff. But we aren't there yet. Um, we're getting there slowly, but it'll take us a couple of years to get there. So are all of these important to a certain, certain extent? Yes. Um, can we, if this money is not given to us, can we do, can we work some other way? Yes, we will continue working, uh, trying to find grants, trying to find loans, as well as looking at if something becomes critical. We do end up robbing Peter to pay Paul kind of thing. So we do move money around, and we come to the, uh, Commission if we have to move projects and change projects.
To be clear, do any of the projects on, on the utility side need to happen within the next year or two?
Yes, we will be working on those. Some of the pipe bursting projects, both the pipe bursting projects, most likely, we will do them, the first ones, first.
Laurin Hills?
Yes, uh, no, the previous slide. Yes, northeast first and Laurin Hills. And, uh, the Leisureville project, we are working through slowly. If a certain area seems to be getting more of a problem, then we focus on that. But it is a project that we have to do over time, slowly but surely, within the next couple of years, finish it. The cleanouts, um, is more for convenience, because it does cause problems if we don't have cleanouts in place. But it's not like a problem today. It just becomes a problem if you don't do it and if somebody has. So that's, that's an area that we need to work, work through like that. So to answer your question, can we, we will continue working on these. It's not like these projects won't get worked on if you don't get the ARPA money. If, if you get the ARPA money, some of these projects will work faster.
Yeah, uh, I'll answer your second question first. Regarding any of these projects, we can get them done within a year, two years. These are all, uh, you know, grading and paving projects. You know, these are D and F roads. The longer we wait, the Fs become F minuses and so on and so forth. If I had to pinpoint one, probably the biggest one that would be the most bang would probably be the Cherry Hill area, just because, I mean, aside from, uh, road paving, that's actually adding sidewalks. So that's why the, the cost increase significantly. Um, so, um, like I said, a lot of these things, we're getting surveys and trying to have the, the project ready to go on a shelf. Assuming they don't get funded, it allows us to seek grants, because it's one of those, uh, shovel-ready projects. We did a lot of legwork ahead of time, and we do that a lot with all these projects. You'll see us getting surveys, um, for all of these, even though we know there might not be funding. That allows us to request for grants.
Mayor, I, uh, would also like to add one thing. I know, um, probably about four or five months ago, the Commission decided to actually put solar panels utilizing CBDG funds on top of, uh, Zell Hester. Since then, we've had some, uh, I guess, our City Engineer, Gary Dunmire, thinks that that will structurally damage the roof of, um, the Zell Hester Center. We've had some discussions as far as like moving forward, but I know Deputy City Manager Andrew Mack thinks that we could utilize those funds in a more efficient way by doing some of these projects that we're talking about, and utilizing those CBPG funds for paving. And also, uh, RJ, who is obviously the administrator for the CBPG funds and ship, um, funds, he, uh, he also suggested that we need to make sure that we have a project done sooner rather than later, to make sure we're spending those monies. And by, uh, by September of twenty twenty-four, but we need to put an action plan in by this year. So if you guys wanted to maybe move in a direction to utilize those funds for using some of these, um, paving some of these roads, we, that staff obviously would be open to it. And Andrew, you want to speak to anything in regards to that?
Uh, just to the fact that, like, what you're speaking about, uh, I think that from a timeliness standpoint and, um, use of the CBD funds, I think this would be a great project if you were going to do the water projects or the sewer projects with the ARPA funds, and then we could backfill with some of this stuff on the streets with the CBG funds. Those are things that are, uh, an area of need and would be, uh, would be used very wisely.
So let me address that, because that was, uh, something that I brought forward, and I certainly have no problem with reallocating funds. My concern is, you're telling me now that this project is going to cause structural damage on the roof of Hester. Why was that never brought up when we voted on it? Why is it a problem now, and it wasn't a problem before, conveniently when the funds are needed? And so, again, I don't have a problem moving funds around, but it's strange.
I can speak to that a little bit. Um, you know, when we, when we allocated those projects back, I can't remember how many months ago when that was done, um, we had our, uh, Sustainability Director, who was our administrator, was working on that project. Since that time, we've had a little bit better analysis as far as, you know, that roof was just recently replaced. And there's a major concern that by adding this, the solar panels to that roof, they could take away from the, the life, um, cycle of that roof. So that's what we're looking at doing is possibly reallocating those funds. We have an alternate project. If you wanted to still do the Hester, or do the solar panels at Hester, we're just making a different recommendation. Instead of putting them on the roof of the gym, we're looking at doing a possibility of an araignasium over the existing outdoor basketball court, which would be a better way to utilize the, the solar panels there. But what the City Manager is saying is that, um, just giving you another alternative, that if you wanted to use CDG funds to get some of the street paving done, um, plus the timeliness, the solar panel project still hasn't been designed, and we're still looking forward for that. But this would be a quicker way to spend down our funds for CBG.
I understand that. I'm just, uh, bothered by the fact that this has popped up very last minute. Uh, last minute, certainly to me. If this is information you've been sitting on, no one has certainly mentioned anything to me about this. And as much as I understand what you're saying about the roof damage, the reality is, other people are putting them in their roofs. So what are we doing with our roofs that we can't do it? And we've got professionals off the ying yang, you know, so, and everyday people are putting it in their roofs. Listen, I'm sure you're gonna come up with technical reasons, uh, why that's the case, that's fine. Again, that's not my problem. My problem is the last-minute nature of this, because we've already voted on that, right? That information should have come forward, otherwise it brings to question, what else are we voting on? That there are other technical problems in there, uh, that may not be feasible. But again, I understand the recommendation that you are making, and it's certainly something that we can reallocate. But please bring the information sooner to me, uh, in the future.
Uh, I was just made aware of that this week, and we had a meeting, I want to say, was it, no, I'm sorry, it was Friday of last week. We had the meeting, and I was advised that we had to put a plan of action together by October or September of thirtieth of this year. That gives us one year to utilize those funds. I want to say it was one point one nine million. And it was essentially giving us a one-month timeframe of pretty much zero margin of error to get that project done that the Commission did vote on. So we were looking at alternatives. So that's why it's coming up and.
So, you know, the discussion this evening is ARPA and CDBG are tangentially related. We can, uh, broach that conversation if absolutely required, but let's first focus our attention on ARPA funds. And if still required, that's perfectly okay with me. Um, like I said, I'm comfortable with reallocation. I just wish I had known sooner, right? I don't know who was first, uh, Vice Mayor, if you want to begin, or Commissioner Cruz, either one.
Can we go back to the slide where it has the dollar amounts and the allocations? So I do understand, um, the revenue losses for year one. And, you know, we've spoken before about the revenue losses for twenty twenty-three, the two million dollars. And that's something that I was okay with. Um, but I am concerned about, is this two point seven in addition to those other four million dollars that have already been allocated for revenue loss?
Yeah, it's additional. This would be for twenty twenty-four's budget.
Yeah, that concerns me as well, Mayor, because, I mean, it was really nice of us to give two million dollars to allocate for revenue losses, whether that's, you know, staff, um, wages, whatever. And that was very, um, I think that was very generous of the Commission to do. However, it's not something that, as, as the Mayor mentioned before, it's not money that's gonna continue to come to us. It's a once-in-a-lifetime, or potentially in our administrative lifetime opportunity, um, to take advantage of. And just, I think that adding another two point seven million dollars of that for revenue losses, like, we might not be as efficient with our dollars as we should be. We're not being as fiscally responsible as we need to be right now, given our economic times. So I am very concerned about that. I would like to get more information on what specific revenue losses we're talking about. Because if we're having revenue losses, it's probably because we're not spending our dollars in the best way that we can. Um, yeah, I'm very concerned about that. Again, I was fine year one, I was fine year two, but it just keeps getting bigger and bigger. And what are we gonna do when we don't have the ARPA funds anymore?
So the one point six million was actual revenue losses in the first year. The two million, um, the interim final rule changed, so it became almost like a tax deduction for every city. So every city was allowed to take up to ten million dollars of revenue losses. They did not have to verify or actually show considerate revenue losses. And I can tell you that it would come into the general fund, it would fund general government services. And the two million even last year funded general government services. It went towards salaries and expenditures and projects and things like that. Again, this two point seven million would continue to fund general government services. It's not a true revenue loss is what you're considering it to be. The first year was a true revenue.
But I'm thinking if, and I'm just selfishly thinking about my district, if we have one point five million dollar project that needs to happen in Palm Beach and Boynton Leisureville, and then a half a million dollar project in Gulfview Harbor, I would like for us to spend that money, theoretically speaking, in a project like that, or a similar project for our residents, like something that directly benefits our community. You know, I, I think that we need to find ways to be more efficient with our dollars. We need to find ways to be more responsible with them. I would, I would like some more follow-up in regard to the two point seven, and see if we can bring that to zero. Because we need to be able to, um, I mean, we're, we have different sources of income. I understand times are getting tougher by the minute, um, but this is just, in my personal opinion, I think it's too much. I think it's not in the best interest of our residents, um, and we need to stop heading in that direction.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Mayor?
I can, um, somewhat agree with my, my colleague's sentiment. I, I think there's definitely some pork to trim that could alleviate that, and Mara, you know, P and Ls aren't fun, right? Um, so, so thank you for doing this. I think, you know, I, I don't, I wouldn't be opposed to allocating some of that for more of these projects, and maybe saving some for revenue loss, kind of meet in the middle. I do disagree with looking at the district selfishly. I think we need to collaborate amongst all of us.
It was an example, Commissioner. Thank you.
And so I think it's important to, you know, look at the city as a whole and identify where can we make the biggest impact everywhere. You know, like the Cherry Hill project, I'd like to see that. Gulfview Harbor, Leisureville, I'd like to see that as well, you know, um, Chapel Hill, those roads are, uh, really bad. Um, and, and that's some low-hanging fruit. So I think, you know, I think we need to navigate and identify what we want to do and pull away from that, allocate those funds from that revenue loss to see where we can have a win-win-win in all the districts. And, and still be mindful of jobs and salaries, because last thing we want to do is let people go. Um, you know, we do have to focus on the core operational functions of the city in order to carry out projects. So I think this is a, this is gonna be a very in-depth conversation for me personally. And I, you know, I would like to just get a, a lot of collaboration here with my colleagues. You know, what, what they're thinking as far as, uh, you know, the projects they'd like to see get done.
Thank you, Commissioner, Vice Mayor, and we're gonna go to Commissioner Hay.
Uh, yes, I can appreciate comments that are being made. But by the same token, I, I feel that we as a city have neglected certain areas for so, so long. It's gonna take, uh, maybe a couple of more dollars to get those up to speed. But I'm interested in the totality of the city. I want, I want to be able to ride into, ride around my city and not be able to identify the slum and blight area. And the way you do that is take advantage of these types of funds, uh, the, the ARPA funds, and realizing that areas that's been overlooked for so many years may require a few extra dollars to get them up to, um, where they look like they should look. So, uh, I, I don't, um, have a problem with discussing this. I think it's an opportunity that we could possibly get a win-win, uh, for, um, all of our districts. But also realize that all of our districts are just not equal at this stage of the game. And in order to, to bring them more in line, uh, we may have to spend extra dollars in certain areas. I do want to say that, uh, you know, you, you talked about, and just ballpark, I think, we've, we got like about thirteen point six million roughly in that area. And we're talking, if we don't do the, uh, the, the two point seven million, we would have approximately maybe four and a half million, uh, in the pot yet spent, okay? Those are the things that I, I want to take a closer look at, uh, where we're spending those dollars. But, but realizing that, I, I get questions. And it's, it's about the old list, believe it or not. And I, I guess, I want to come from this, uh, council or from the, from legal, or from the mayor, or someone, other than just me saying it over, over again, that that list that we created back when Karish LaJune was here, and also when, uh, David Scott was here, that list, as I understand it, has gone away. Because when this administration came into power, uh, we, we did away somehow with that list. And if I'm, uh, correct in that, I'd like for, to hear that from another source, so that it'd be more than just me on ruckus, uh, of saying what, what I'm saying. And if I'm not correct, please correct me. So I don't, you want to address that, uh, Mayor? You understand what I'm talking about?
I think so, absolutely. Let, let me, let me try and tell me if it's the same one you're referring to. Uh, I think this is the list of nonprofits. Is that what you're referring to, Commissioner? My understanding is that that list still exists. It's not that we threw it out. But from the conversation we've heard over the months from this commission, infrastructure became a priority. And so it's not that we're saying no, it's saying we also have infrastructure needs as well, whether it's District Two or wherever it may be in the city. So the window is still open because ultimately we make that decision, Commissioner, as a group collectively. So there's, again, so many needs, whether it's public works, streets and sewers and.
I get that.
Or nonprofits. So I'm open. And it's a conversation if you want to have, I'm happy to have it.
But at the end of the day, at the end of the day, the, the funding will be exhausted, gone.
Right.
Before we even attempt to look back at that list that, that existed. Because we, we, we've changed priorities, we look, we're going in a different direction. And I'm still getting questions about that list, the status of it. Are we gonna see anything from it? So those are the type of issues that, that I'm facing. And I just want it to be clarified in some manner as to will those items on that old list ever be addressed? And, and I'm, my, my wish is, my hope is that it will be addressed, but it's just gonna take a little longer than what we anticipated when we first started this out. Because what we're doing now with the infrastructure and, and this, you know, all the other needs that we feel that are priorities, I'm all for it. We, we do need those things. But it's at the expense of that old list that I'm still getting questioned by. And I hope that this commission understands what I'm, what I'm saying. So when I try to answer those questions, they, you know, they, yeah, 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 you know, that, that kind of response. And, and I need the support of exactly where are we? Is that gonna be addressed as soon as we can? Or maybe it's never gonna be addressed? What, what, where are we? Are we going in a totally different direction? Because when you, when we look at the numbers, the numbers are almost exhausted all right, right now. It's not gonna be anything left to, to direct in, in, in that direction. So.
The nonprofits direction.
And the nonprofits.
Commissioner, like I said, the conversation is open, I'm willing to have that. But I do want to parse this because I don't want to have, throw so many different topics on the table. We'll do them one at a time. But please know, I am open to it, all right? So we'll, we can have that discussion. But I think the first question we need to address is what to do with that 2.7 that staff has recommended for revenue, revenue loss?
I agree with that.
Because that'll determine how much money do we actually have.
Exactly. I'm with you on that.
Okay, so I think that's step one, and then step two, we can proceed next to your item. I see Andrew Mack. You want to chime in?
Yeah, just knowing that we're gonna be doing a budget workshop in the 30th and June is coming up as well. Even if you didn't allocate the 2.7 or left it for the revenue losses, we could do the 1.8 now. We still have time during the budget process. If, you know, we get back and the numbers are better or in line, we could then allocate that money at that time. If that's something that you chose to do, or if you wanted to, you reduced the number to the, say, two and a half or two, like you suggested. What I'm saying is that I don't think you have to make a decision tonight. These projects will be there. It's a funding that's holding them back. So we can allocate what you feel comfortable doing tonight. And as we get further into the budget process and we know what our, our revenue projections are or where we are financially, then we can make a better informed decision at that time.
I couldn't agree with you more because, you know, the 2.7, you've all heard my position. I do want to use that instead of revenue loss. But I need to hear first, what's the plan moving forward? Because I'm not here to cripple the city funds either. I just want to make sure that it truly is needed. But now by then, we will know that information, okay? So for now, we have 1.8 and then we could have more, and then we'll know that when we get to the workshops. Commissioner Kelly, you haven't had the opportunity to speak yet.
Thank you, Mayor. My position is that, and I think this is the consensus, is that this is extra funding and this, this shouldn't be used for us to budget our city at all. This is, this is what, this money was intended for us to help the community in whatever we decided to do. And, and I, and I understand it could be used to make up revenue, and we did that two years in a row, and we made up a lot of revenue losses. But it's concerning that this has turned into a regular thing, and it's gonna end, and we're not addressing the issue. And so I'm not comfortable saying yes to allocating even a portion of that without seeing at budget hearings that they're really, truly, we have done everything possible. I don't want staff to depend on this crutch, that there is this money sitting there. And oh, well, the commission said, maybe we can get a million, or maybe we can get 500 to make up a difference. This cannot be your crutch going into budget cycle at all, like. And so I don't want to go into budget cycle saying, oh, we have this crutch. They said that we might be able to use it if we show a true need. So that's my position on it. I feel like we need to do, you know, just like Commissioner Cruz said, we need to make sure that we're budgeting appropriately and correctly. And if there truly is a need, then that's something that needs to come before the commission so that we can make a decision appropriately. But I don't, you know, because the need, the reason for this funding was to help the residents, period. Not to make up budget shortfalls. Yes, they allowed cities and municipalities to use that when I feel like some cities ran out of enough tasks to use the money. Because it wasn't kind of an afterthought to use it for various other things. So that's my position on that. Commissioner Hay, my position on the, you know, and I, I understand the list that happened. And I feel like that really got steamrolled. And I think in, in not a, not a good way on many fronts because I feel like the nonprofits were given kind of hope. There was all of this money, and we had nonprofits apply for millions of dollars. And so in my position, seeing all the need that the city has and the residents have, it's difficult for me to say we need to give millions of dollars to nonprofits that aren't in our city, that are not serving our residents. And so for me, although I am, and, and we've considered certain nonprofits that serve our residents, and we've supported the schools. I'm not saying that we wouldn't and maybe consider supporting a nonprofit that's in the city with a need. And maybe that's a conversation that we need to have, is how to readjust this. But I think that there was huge expectations that the former commission gave to the nonprofits that opened up this huge Pandora's box. And we are now left with having to answer questions that we, you know, shouldn't, you know, that we have to answer. I mean, we have to answer them and we have to be forthcoming. In my opinion, with, in, in my position, is with everything that the city needs to serve our residents, you know, what we're doing and talking about with these ARPA funds, this is, these are things that are helping our residents and helping our quality of life here. And although I want to, and we have, we've supported nonprofits and we will continue to support them, there are nonprofits that we give land to and we give money to, and we help them in lots of different ways. So although I want to continue that discussion with nonprofits, I feel like we are benefiting our residents by talking about and helping them in different ways that maybe are not as tangible. They're fixing roads, they're fixing sewers, but as long as they can drive, as long as their sewer, their toilets flush, as long as water is getting to their house, we're also doing our job and serving the residents. So that's kind of my thought on the nonprofit end. I feel really bad because all those nonprofits that are in the city and in the county that have applied for these, they're worthy, but I just, I can't in good conscience say we need to support them over supporting the infrastructure of our city.
All right, thank you. Let's go back around this way and we'll come back to you, Commissioner. All right, Commissioner Cruz, go ahead.
Commissioner Kelly, I couldn't agree with you more. I, you, the way that you followed up and the way that you set the crutch, because that was, that was a good example of what this is, what this money is. And the fact that you mentioned that it is somewhat of an afterthought that the federal government expanded the ability of how those ARPA funds could be utilized beyond the initial scope of utilization. It, I do believe that it is an afterthought, and I do believe that this money is, think of it as a, as a tip. When you go to a restaurant, you tip somebody, this is like extra money. This is not our solid foundation. This is not our bread and butter. This is not the meat and potatoes of the city. It's wonderful that we have these funds, and I'm very grateful for them. At the same time, what's gonna happen in 2026 when we no longer have these funds? When we get used to spending money in a very comfortable way? And then we realize and say, hold on a second, we don't have these, you know, millions of dollars to, it's been about a minimum of $2 million a year in revenue losses. When we don't have those 2 million, what's gonna happen? Are we gonna be in a really bad situation? And something was mentioned earlier where, you know, it was mentioned like, we don't want to, you know, lay off staff and, and any of that. Of course not. I, I completely agree with that. But ARPA funds is not the location where staff should be paid from. That's not the right place. So we should not, again, as you said earlier, Commissioner Kelly, we should not use the crutch to pay for staff because not, again, it was done before and I supported it and I completely, I'm still fine with supporting that until fiscal year 2023. But going forward, fiscal year 23 and 24, I mean, this money was given to the municipalities, to local governments with the purpose of helping the people who live in the city. And what better way to help the people that live in the city than to provide better infrastructure? Then, you know, we, we spend money in public safety as well, which is important for our residents. But now we're gonna run out of money. And if we don't prioritize infrastructure, if we don't prioritize these projects that are, these roads that our residents are driving on every single day, that are D rated and F rated, we're going to be in a lot of trouble. So in my, my view is, I highly support spending these dollars in infrastructure capital improvements. I understand there is money for capital improvements, but we also understand that there's about, if I remember correctly, about $35 million or up to 50, I think it was, when you gave that presentation of potential capital improvement projects.
Forty, $43 million, and we have appropriated about 31, 32 million. And it expires the surplus 2026, and we get capped at 43. And we've already appropriated 31 million since 2016. So similar to this exercise, we have 10 million left to get with the next couple of years. Again, all the other CIP projects that include infrastructure, roads and things.
Thank you. So, so from that perspective, I want the city to start thinking about ways to be more efficient and effective with the funds. Do we have to spend money on certain items? Maybe we don't. And again, we don't, we don't have the time to go into the, every single dollar that's spent. We're not here full-time, even though we maybe should. But there is a problem with that, and we're paying for it because I feel like there could be a little bit of an oversight issue that's clearly showing up here with the 2.7 million. So I think we need to look further into finding ways in our actual budget and in the correct places to pay for staff, to pay for the things that we need. And to remember that ARPA funds are additional funds and they're not, they're not our meat and potatoes. You know, that's, that's kind of what I had. That's all I'm gonna say, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm gonna turn to Vice Mayor.
Yeah, in, in respect to the nonprofits. So I remember at NLC, I attended an ARPA workshop and they identified, they took a survey of hundreds of municipalities, not thousands, and identified how they utilize those funds. And the two, from what I remember, that were top tier were infrastructure, which I know we've talked about, you know, years and years, and weeks and weeks and weeks. And we see that, we see that every day. It's very subjective. And we know where that oversight is. That oversight is internal within the city. What I don't want to happen is, and, and Commissioner Kelly, I think you, you, you put it very well with saying that the previous commission had brought this forward, now we have to answer to it. You know, I, I think if the data is showing that we are, that if the data is showing nationally that municipalities are utilizing this for infrastructure and public safety, I think there's a reason for that. And so I don't, you know, it's, it's unfortunate. I think there is different ways to, again, support nonprofits. And I'm not completely against allocating any funds. I just think $500,000, a million dollars being allocated is, is a healthy amount that could lose oversight. And that's my fear. I do not want, I, I do not want to miss the opportunity to try to fund as much stuff as possible in respect to infrastructure, like everyone else is. And, you know, we've allocated funds for public safety. And so I, I think, again, there's a lot of moving parts in here. I think this goes in hand in hand with the budget. Mayor, I think, you know, with this curve ball, with Easel Hester, and, and, and side note on that, is that, does that have to do with the flat roof? Is that, is that why? Because I know a lot of times you'll see it on cable roofs.
Correct. So that's a TPO roof. And typically, when you're building that roof, you would build in that. Any penetrations to the roof just leads to long-term potential leaks. And I think that's where the biggest concern is for that project.
And, and, and how much money exactly or rough estimate was allocated for that project?
It was about $230,000.
$230,000? And so, and then what was the, there was an alternative?
One of the things that we had talked about potentially was, as a part of that project, was creating an outdoor cover over the basketball courts there to help program that facility more. That would also give us an opportunity to integrate the solar panels into that infrastructure, which would be a better use of that location.
Okay. Yeah, so I think that's a decision that kind of plays into all of this too, is could, could we make an impact with that? Or could we make an impact by increasing what we have to fund a project like Cherry Hill or something? I almost kind of want to work on this. I, I think, Andrew, you mentioned spend some now and then work with that 2.7 million while we do the budget and go from there. But again, I, I think two things, public safety, infrastructure, and we've spent money on public safety already. And so, you know, I, 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 I think there's, we gotta, we gotta look at, we gotta look at the budget, right? But I, I, I agree with my colleagues, what they're saying, you know, it makes sense. Yeah, I, I, this is kind of like rooting to like a, a larger picture, right? Like, I think holistically looking at, and again, this is why we had the budget workshop, but trimming that fat so we're not in this position to even have that conversation. Yeah, I, I wouldn't be completely opposed to donating some or allocating some funds to nonprofits, but 100,000, 500, a million, that's out of the question for me. I just can't, I, I can't in, in good faith do that and then neglect a project that may be more impactful.
Like I said to all of you, this is a difficult conversation, right? Lots of needs, limited funds. Commissioner Hay, I, I know you've been waiting, so I want to make sure you had an opportunity.
I, I think enough been said, but I just want to clarify that I am, I think basically we all saying the same thing. We're pretty much on the same page. I am not saying that I want to spend millions of dollars on any particular non-project. All I was trying to convey was the fact that I'm still getting questions about that. And I, I need support in that area in terms of being official that this commission is, is looking at some other immediate needs and, and the priorities have changed a little bit. I remember I was one that supported removing. I remember I was one that supported removing one of the projects because they were asking for millions of dollars. And we, we, we didn't go that route, but, but I, I, I'm in support of the direction that we're going. Like what, what Andrew said, those funds that we, the 1.8 or whatever it was that we can do tonight to move things ahead, we, we need to continue to do that. Then we still have time to, in a workshop or wherever, discuss what we want to do with the, with the remaining. So that, that's, that's where I am. So I, I think we're all saying basically the same thing, just a different way.
Thank you, everybody. I can, you know, come up with compromises if, if you guys would like. But from what I've heard from all of you, you know, there isn't a really strong desire in this commission to spend 2.7 on revenue loss. But we won't have all the information until the budget workshops. So let me just ask my colleagues, would you like to make some decisions now or defer to the budget workshop? So when we have all information or can we, or do you want to make some decisions on the 1.8 at least? And then revisit if additional funds are available? All right, Vice Mayor?
I would like to propose doing this with the budget workshop. I think I can make better decisions that way. And then that way I know, I, I, I can look at the budget and say, hey, you know, let's propose, let's trim this, you know, and, and try to close that gap. You know, and we'll have more set of eyes on it, right? And so I, I, I think what's responsible is waiting and there's no, there's no rush to like anything right now, right? I, I know, I know that we have to have, we have to submit a plan prior to September 30th. Will we be okay to wait for this budget workshop and then move forward with some of these projects?
Have until December 31st of 2024 to actually allocate these funds, so.
Perfect. So we got time. I don't think we need to rush. I think, you know.
Although I don't know what that does to the timeline of some of the infrastructure projects. Yeah, we would like.
The better. That's all I can say. Projects don't happen that quickly, but we will make the timeframes work.
To bid it out.
Correct, correct. So the sooner they're better, but I do think, you know, we can't wait till the budget workshops. I don't think, you know, that's only, you know, 60, 90 days away. I think that doesn't impact our schedule that drastically, that we can make those decisions. Obviously there's some projects here that we'd love to see get off the ground now, but you know, we can wait that long.
And we are funding some of the behind the scenes legwork for these projects, you know.
Designs.
Yeah, design, survey, geotechnical.
Any from my colleagues?
But having heard the last few statements, I think we can wait to the budget, budget workshop to iron all of this out. So that's, that's where I am. This, this weight, I, I don't want, and I know it's unfortunate, but I don't want it to be a cushion when we're approaching the budget, the budget. I really want to see staff make the effort that, that I know they will to make everything work. But I, I want to have this discussion at the workshop, not now.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Kelly.
Yeah, I mean, just one thing, I mean, just to kind of put it on the record, you know, all these projects, obviously we have to, eventually they all have to be tackled in some way, shape or form. And, you know, I try and do my best to look at the city as a whole as opposed to my district. And so, you know, that being said, District 4 has some roads that need some assistance too. So you know, that's, that's my priority and I'll fight for my residents on that because that's something that they've been waiting a long time to have those roads repaved. But I also, Galaxy Elementary is desperate for sidewalks. They're, that is a neighborhood school and their students walk to their school. And so, you know, Cherry Hill, that project is high on my list because it is public safety 101 that our children can get to school safely. So, you know, those are kind of my, just to throw it out there, those are my priorities. The others, you know, and then obviously the utilities projects, I would support the commission on what, you know, they found was, you know, and what staff said was the highest priorities. But those are, those are my thoughts on what is on there so that staff can kind of have direction on what my position is.
Commissioner, thank you for bringing that up. Because that is certainly one of mine as well. The Cherry Hill project, bullet point number one on, I don't know what slide number this is, but the, yeah, the Cherry Hill project. Right? Yes, this is the one also impacting Galaxy. All right. So I, I fully support you. And if we have a third, we can at least, you know, at least staff knows that there is majority here.
I'll be that third for the Cherry Hill project. That's high.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, definitely.
We'll be four. So, um, so I, um, you know, and, and, and since Commissioner Kelly started, you know, I'm, I think, you know, obviously Chapel Hill, that's my district and those roads are horrible. And it's not a hefty price tag. I think that's low hanging fruit. I think that can be done. And outside of that, you know, I'm, you know, I want to help the whole city, but I think that Cherry Hill project, if we had to pick one right now, I would, I wouldn't be against moving forward, depending on what everyone else thinks. But I, I, I think that for me personally is probably the highest priority from what I see now.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Cruz, did you have any final thoughts or comments as we're wrapping up the discussion?
Oh, Mayor, thank you.
All right, thank you. So we will have our final decisions when we get to the workshops, but at least you've heard from the commission, at least one project that we can get behind on. But we'll make our final decisions at the workshop, or at least lay them all out at the workshop. All right. Is there anything else from staff?
Just thank you very much. This is definitely an informed conversation and we appreciate to have.
Thank you, Mr. Mack, Mr. Guzman, Dr. Calcutt and Ms. Friedrichson. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.
Mr. Dunmire, I see you back there. Thank you. Moving on to the next agenda item, which is 10C. City Commission to Discuss Speed Bumps Throughout the City. This was requested by Vice Mayor Turkin and I see that Mr. Dunmire, City Engineer, is already at the podium. If you'd like to introduce the item.
Yes, thank you. Hi, my name's Gary Dunmire. I'm the City Engineer. And today I'm going to, I prepared a presentation for Drive Safe Boynton. I, I did want to preface this conversation that as I do neighborhoods such as the Cherry Hill neighborhood, traffic calming will be incorporated in that. That won't come out of the Drive Safe Boynton budget. So while I might get applications for that area, again, that won't impact the budget that we have for Drive Safe Boynton. So Drive Safe Boynton, if you don't mind Manny going to the first or the next slide, please. It was born out of our current ordinance. This, this is the law. This is what I'm governed by. This is what I'm held accountable for. And if you don't mind, I'm going to read. City shall consider placement of traffic calming measures only upon completion of an initial traffic study. The traffic calming shall be considered, considered only if the local streets with average daily traffic volumes greater than 500 vehicles per day. The other criterion is only when the 85th percentile speed is greater than 30 miles per hour for those streets posted at 25 miles per hour or greater than 35 miles per hour for those streets posted at 30 miles per hour. If the 85th percentile is, it's an important number for a lot of traffic engineers. The 85th percentile, what that is, is if you measure all the traffic on a road and you determine what all the speeds are of all the traffic all day long. Thank you so very much. 85th percentile is, that's the speed that most people are comfortable driving that road on. And so when our roads are at 25 mile an hour, that's our target speed limit. What 85th percentile means is there, people are comfortable driving on roads at 30 miles per hour. So I just wanted to explain a little bit about that, if that's clear. And because sometimes that's a little bit full of jargon. So if you have questions, I'm happy to answer it. Okay. And then now I'm ready to go to my next slide, please, Manny. So Drive Safe Boynton was born out of that ordinance, like I said. And so what happens is for the last two decades, for over 20 years, the city's been getting calls from concerned citizens about speeding on their roads. You know, traffic goes too fast, what can we do? And for the last 20 years, we haven't been keeping records. So what had happened was a woman called that lived in Gulfy Harbor. And she complained about traffic. We went out and we did a traffic study and she doesn't have 500 trips a day and her 85th percentile wasn't at 30 miles per hour, five miles over the posted speed limit. And so that was at the slow time of the year. And so she was calm enough. I explained to her the traffic calming, this is how we have to do this. I can't help you unless traffic counts warrant it. We had, we waited till the streets were busy, you know, it's, it's Christmas time, tons of people are down here, the roads are busy. All right, let's do another traffic study. We did another traffic study, couldn't help her. The deputy city manager and I, we went to her house. And while we were out there, people were speeding down the road and we're, and we're like, yes, okay. We, we gotta, we gotta invent a way for, to help people because this ordinance, as it's written, doesn't let us do that. So Drive Safe Boynton was born. Now the way it works is somebody fills out an application and this, this person, she participated in our very first Drive Safe Boynton application. And part of it requires that it's not just this one woman calling. It's got to be a neighborhood that convinces or that supports this request. So it's not just an application. It's an application with co-applicants. And what happens is a neighbor grabs this and says, I have an issue, or they call me. This is how it typically plays out. They call me and they say, Gary, there's, I'm complaining about the traffic on this road. There's lots of speeding. And I'm like, okay, I, I hear you. Here's what I need you to do. This is the application. This is how it works. And so they go to their neighbors and there's, they're, hi, do you think there's a speeding problem? Yes. All right, can you help me co-sign this application? I'm trying to work with the city and tell them that, yes, indeed, there's a problem. And this has been effective and I've got some statistics showing you later in this presentation about how effective it is. But you, using this, it, it's a good basis. It helps me, A, figure out where there's a problem and where more than one person's concerned about a problem on a road. And B, it also helps me keep track of these applications. And so now as I send these applications out, you know, if, if you can't measure it or, and you don't keep track of it, it, it's not something that you can prove upon. And so what we started doing is from, you know, three years ago when this program started till now, it's, I've got a list of all the applications we've received when we send them out, if they ever get responded to. And then, you know, there's certain people that, and, and this is where, as a city engineer, I have problems. There's some residents that don't like to talk to their neighbors. And to me, that doesn't mean their concerns aren't valid. And so it, it, it's hard for me to, to justify the rating system. And so now with this slide, I like to get into the rating system and, and help you see some of the difficulties I face. So one of the most important things to me on this application, and I put these on, on, on an order of how important they are. And so when somebody sends out an application, if they've got more than 25% of the people that sign the application live on the street. Oh, I'm sorry. Manny, can you go back a slide, please? Thank you. So if more than 25% of the people have signed or co-signed the application, that, that proves to me, that helps me see that, yes, people on the street are really, they need, they want something. They want some type of traffic calming. And it does another thing for me too. It helps me place signs in their yard. So when I put in speed humps, what happens is there's an accompanying sign right next to the, and usually these speed humps have to go in people's front yards because the way people's driveways face the road and it makes it really hard to place them. And so if they've signed these applications, it makes it real easy for me to say, oh, that's a good spot to put it. They're definitely not going to complain. The next thing on here is the 85th percentile, which I explained to you just a moment ago. And then some of these other items, crash history.
Mr. Dunmire, we had a commissioner, hey?
You talked about the 25, 25% of the street must participate. You know, some street are short like mine and some are long.
Yes.
Like 4th Street. How, how do you, where do you cut it off as far as getting the 25%?
Well, it's, it's funny you ask. So Holy Road is a very short road. There's four homes on it. I had one guy send me an application.
There you go. There you go.
So, you know, with that one, I, you know, I was skeptical. I had to, I had to get involved. It takes a lot of my time to, you know, I talked to him and his problem wasn't on Holy Road. It wasn't his colleagues that live there, his local residents. It was the church at the end of the road. And so I approached the church. I talked to parishioner and like, can you talk to your, to your parish and tell them, you know, godliness is slow. And, and anyways, it, it didn't work out and he was gracious enough, the guy that had called in on Holy Road, that he let me try a couple of things that they didn't work and they were cheap things to try. And so finally I didn't sell out the speed home. And since we've, that's been installed, he's happy. He calls me up and, and when people call me, I, 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 I hire them. They, they make $0 a year, but they become my assistant and city engineers and they help me with all the other things in the city. So he's another employee that you guys don't have to pay for. I'm sorry. So just to finish out my list here, it's a crash history. I look up crash history. How close is it to a school? Are there places that people walk to that, you know, they use the street, like if it's a school or if it's a store, you know, pedestrian generators? ADT, average daily traffic, cut through traffic, sidewalks. You know, if there's no sidewalks as there weren't, or there weren't in Gulfy Harbor when I, when, when this program was born, sidewalks would have made it a little less imperative. Sidewalks don't necessarily support the need for speed humps because kids have a place to be and bike and whatever. It isn't on the road necessarily. Strength length, that was more to your point, the street length, street width, and then visibility restrictions. Part of the component two was, you know, we had, when people participate in the program, I always send them a bumper sticker and there's one on the screen. That's one of our bumper stickers.
Do you want to sail through or may for?
Right. And we have two versions of them and there's a few around. And if you guys want them, I can make sure they end up in your mailboxes. I think they're in Dan's office. If you go up to see them. Now Manny, I'm ready for the next slide. So you submit an application and it's being considered. So there's two types of installations that you can qualify for, whether it's a short term or a permanent. So I want to talk about the short-term installations. Usually these consist of speed humps, the, the speed bumps rather. And you'll notice there's a sign that gets placed in somebody's front yard or I try to place it in between yards if possible. They, these are given when some type of solution is required. Or, and given's not the right word, but the, these are installed when something's required. And it's, I'm going to be planning a road restoration project and we have lots of restoration projects planned. But if I've got something planned within the next 18 months, I, I don't, I want to be responsible with taxpayers' money and I don't want to put in a more expensive option.
Gary, one moment.
Sure.
If I take a zoom out so we can see the numbers at the bottom of the slide.
Oh, yeah, you, I'm sorry. Well, I'll read them for you. So what it says at the bottom of the temporary, it says, it's $2,000 for one of these. And it takes three staff members about three hours for a short term. And then when you look at the permanent installation, I have those professionally done, those are about $4,400. And if you get fewer of them, MOT costs a little bit more, so, but average is about $4,400. Okay. So again, going back to the short-term installations, if I've got something planned, I don't want to put a permanent one that I just have to mill up in, in 18 months. So to me, it makes more sense to put something that's temporary. Or if, you know, I get a resident that is concerned and I can't prove, you know, they haven't got all the neighbors knocking on the doors, so I'll put in something temporary. And then when I usually put something in temporary, I go back every year, every 12 months, I like to look at it. And if it does what that person wanted, or if it does what the few people wanted, then I can turn it into something that's more permanent. Going back to what you had said a little earlier, Commissioner Hay, in regards to longer streets. I, I've received problem, I've got problems too, where I've gotten applications where it's for just like the east half of the street. And I don't necessarily get anything for the west half of the street. So I respond to the, the comments that I receive and I'll, I'll place the traffic coming. And the first instance of this happened was on, I want to say Northwest 12th. I put in some temporary speed humps there because it was, it was, it was an immediate need that I needed to get filled right away. And I didn't have time to wait for a permanent one to be installed. And so when I put the temporary in, then the other side of the street, I think I put it in on the west and the east side of the street. Hey, how, how did they get one and we didn't? I'm like, well, they submitted an application. They're like, there's an application. And so we went through that education and, and so then I, I got another one.
Have you heard of, of speed tables?
I have. So speed tables are like our speed humps. Our speed humps are shown on, on the right here, on the, under the permanent installations. And they're six feet to the high point and then six feet off. So it's a total of 12. You go up about four inches. And when you drive them, if you do 15, 20 mile an hour, you can take them comfortably and it's no big deal. And I, I, there's a lot of them over here and on the west side of Seacrest, in the central Seacrest, the Forest Park area, if, if you want to drive them. And, and they do a good job of slowing people down. Whereas these temporary ones, you'll see those on Northwest 17th. Those were, those were temporary. And the reason they were temporary is because Those were, those were temporary, and the reason they were temporary is because I, I needed to get them installed fast to, to respond to some concerns. And so I will be reviewing those probably in the next six, eight months, and probably turn them into permanent ones. But it was, it's something that needed to be responded to. And the temporary ones, you got to go a lot slower over them. And, and so they're, they're, I'm not going to say they're painful, but, but they're designed to say, hey, neighborhood, if you want these, I mean, this is going to slow traffic down, and this is what you want. And, and so when they hit these, or they drive on these, they're like, the residents, this slows traffic down, and the residents like them. I, I put them in temporarily too, because, you know, I practice engineering. And so if I do something wrong, this is an inexpensive way for me to, okay, this isn't working, let's pull this out. And, and I've had to do that in one case. Manny, go to the next slide, please. There you go, and so I've got some statistics for you. And then the next two slides are going to be a map of where these things are. So in the first year, I received 19 applications, the second year, I received eight, and then in 2023, I received four. And those were my installations for completed as permanent and completed temporary, I didn't write permanent next to the top one. So one of the questions you may be asking is, why'd you get so many in the first year and not so many of the 22nd and 20, or in 22 and 23? And the answer is, I've got 35 applications that people have requested, and they don't send me back the data for. I, I keep track of everything that I send out, and, and so I've got 35. And, and so while 19 were received, 19 were received completed in the first year. And so with that, I'm going to go to the next slide, if you don't mind Manny. And what I've done is I've chopped the city into two halves, and I've got the north half and the south half. And then on this slide, it shows where all my applications are, or where my installations are. And Commissioner Kelly, you're going to say, well, there's some speed bumps in District Four, and there are, but those, those didn't participate in the Drive Safe Boynton application. And neighborhoods like, that have large HOAs, like the Meadows, for instance, or even Leisureville. Those HOAs, I work with those directly, and it really doesn't make sense for them to fill out a Drive Safe Boynton application, because they can have a, a board meeting or a membership meeting, and all their HOA residents come and they show up, and I'll get 100 applications. So if the POA approaches the city and says, hey, we need traffic calming like Leisureville, mind you, when we go to the next slide, don't do that yet, Manny, when we go to the next slide, it'll show Leisureville, and it probably shouldn't show Leisureville on here. Just looking at this, what I've shown here, and, you know, and I've had to put a legend, because, you know, what I do is, it's complicated to present, I mean, it's, it's easy to talk about. And unfortunately, and, and I'm sorry that you can't see this, but if you guys would like, I can send you for each one of these projects, and, and these aren't in chronological order, so if you see a one, that doesn't mean I got that in 21. What had happened was on my list, I sorted it, and then I just, when I sorted it, it took them out of order, and, and I just gave them numbers, so I could show them graphically on an image here. But I can, and, and follow up, I can send you guys an email saying, you know, project one is this street, and they wanted this. And so I can give you all the details if you want. If you want to, if you have specific questions on the slide, I can, I can answer them, or if we can just go to the next slide. Okay, Manny, next slide, please. Okay, and then this is the south half, and so this is where I've installed things. And so you can see primarily District Two and, and District One, I've got a lot of traffic calming. Again, these are, most of this is Leisureville, 18 was the very first one we installed. And with that, I'm, I'm available for questions.
All right, where shall we begin? I believe I ended on my right last time, let's begin on my left this time, Commissioner Kelly?
Thank you, Gary, I don't really have any questions, I'm glad that we had this presentation, because I think, thank you Vice Mayor Turkin for bringing this up, because I think it's important to see, you know, what we're doing, and also to learn about Drive Safe Boynton, because either that's, I didn't know all that much about it, and so I think it's important that we, you know, that we, we make that, you know, we market that, and we get it out there, that we have this program, and encourage residents to reach out with their concerns. I know in District Four in particular, although all of our districts are affected by traffic and speed, you know, we see it a lot in District Four. My question is, and it just reminded me that I did have a question that I wrote down, you know, District Four primarily is county roads. You know, District Two and District One, and, you know, in District Three, they, there are a lot more city roads than what we have in District Four. And so how does Drive Safe Boynton, or if at all, how can it be utilized on a county road?
That, you're right, the county roads, they're managed by Palm Beach County, and they don't, they'll allow traffic calming, but they need to be on residential roads. And when it comes to Congress Avenue, when it comes to Lawrence, when it comes to minor, they have to be policed.
Yeah, I mean, that's, you know, District Four is, we're one of those, you know, districts that almost every road, major road in our district is a county road. And so I get a lot of residents that reach out with regard to traffic and speeding, and it's a high priority for me. And it's, I know city staff, you know, and police chief, you know, they work really hard to try and bring some, some presence in District Four, because it is all county roads, and we have no control over the speed limits. And, and so, you know, I, this program is, is great, and I'm glad that we have this program, but I just want to make that point clear that, you know, when it, when we do have a, a county road, even though it's, it crosses over city limits and it's in the city, you know, there's very little that the city can do as far as speeding, except for police enforcement, and, you know, and, and that sort of thing. So, and dealing with the county, which, you know, and, and talking to them on priorities that our residents have, which is a challenge, Gary, I know that you have worked with the county for a long time too. So that's a challenge, is, you know, getting them to listen to the concerns of the residents, so. Those are.
I do have an interesting fact for you to show how busy our police department is. When Sergeant Hawkins was here, and that was a little while ago, he had said that they had issued 967 tickets on one month on Old Wayne Road between Congress and Boynton Beach Boulevard. That, that's a astounding number of tickets. So they're doing their part.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly, Commissioner Hay?
Hey Gary, I really appreciate you taking this project on and looking at the entire Boynton and seeing what the best fit, because one fit, fit doesn't fit another neighborhood, et cetera, et cetera. Because I found that the, those little temporary ones that you put in, which take you up and drop you, you know, they, they vary, but not that long. A lot of times, that, those are more effective in terms of slowing the traffic down for me, than some of the ones that, that are kind of smoothly go over and then down. I mean, I, I've seen drivers go over those things at almost the same speed. But when they hit those temporary ones, man, it's like a, a little short wall. Yep, drop you down.
Which is killing your teeth, don't you?
Yes. So I, I guess, can, can those remain, do you have a problem just keeping those in forever, or in a length of time, or?
Definitely not, I, I, I feel like the preference is something more permanent, but no, those temporary ones, and they're easily replaced, you know? So no, I don't have any issue leaving them in place, because, you know, there's some places that I, I put them that isn't necessarily industry standard. And, and I say that cautiously, in, in so much that I, I put them there so I can watch them and to see how they perform. And if I feel like people are going too slow, and people are queuing up behind them, and that creates a danger somewhere, you know, I, I keep a close eye on that, and I'll, and I'll pull them out as quick, as soon as I see something like that happen. I mean, if there's any possibility that something like that happens, because, you know, I care about safety, and, and so I want to make sure that it's the right application for the right place. And, you know, and sometimes a gentle reminder that the speed isn't 30 mile an hour isn't going to be enough. So, so sometimes you're right, I need to have something that's more abrupt, and that's, you know, another tool in the arsenal.
So your objective is not to have speed bumps on every street in Boynton, but, but to determine what's the best fit for that neighborhood?
That's always, that's always been the agenda, or my agenda. And, and speaking to that is, you know, on, what is it, Northwest First Court? We had people taking the curb too fast. And, and so I, I solved that problem by putting in delineator posts, making people stay in the lane, and not being able to go in the outside lane, and then cut narrow, and then, you know, so that slowed people down, so they could make the next turn. And so, yes, I try to find creative ways, and economically beneficial ways to slow people down, because I, I do think sometimes people are always want speed bumps.
People in Village Royal are ecstatic about that little line that you put for them to walk on either side of the road. They're just all excited. Now, the, the other request is to get a walkway, you know where that club is that you and I went in, going into the clubhouse? They'd like to get hash marks for a walkway across that little area would, would be helpful. But do you get a large percentage of people saying that they do not want speed bumps on their, on their street? Because I've, I've talked to some people, and they say, well, I don't want them. And I talked to another group, and they say, all of us say, I want them. So I guess it just depends on who applies and who doesn't.
Right, I, I think, you know, the other, the other nice thing about, I'm sorry, my voice is.
Thank you, Ty.
Sorry about that. So, yeah, I get a spectrum of people that, that want them, and, I'm sorry. And some that don't. Now, mostly what I find is when people have, like, Commissioner Turkin's neighborhood's a little different than, than the Meadows. Commissioner or Vice Mayor Turkin's neighborhood has, all the roads have homes on them, whereas like the Meadows, it has a feeder road, and that feeder road should be appropriately signed or speeded, or signed for a higher speed than, that's on a local residential road. And, and so the people that, that live in the Meadows, they, they want to be able to do 30, 35, it's signed 25, but they want to be able to do 30 and 35 on that road. And so sometimes HOA, you know, they ask me to come and speak there, and, you know, like, Gary, we need speed humps. I'm like, no, no, the road's signed to go too slow. Because, you know, earlier I said that the 85th percentile, and when you do the 85th percentile on that road, it's 30 miles an hour, that's what everybody wants to do on that road. So it's just, it's signed too low. And, and so no, people don't want speed humps there.
Just one last question, going back to Commissioner Kelly's question about county roads. I, I know some of the bus stops where kids are waiting for the school bus, if the bus itself is not there, people are just zooming right by, and I'm afraid somebody could, gonna get hit. And what's the process? Do we have to just do the same thing with the county that we do with you in terms of fill out an application at the county level, or they don't even talk to us, or what?
No, the, the county, I, I mean, they, they, they want to hear about it, they want to help, but, but it boils down to enforcement. And, you know, and then if we have crossing guards, I mean, they can call. And I just, I, I feel like, you know, if we have an issue with the police department, they want to know about it. And I, I think, I think sometimes it's intimidating to call the police, and sometimes we feel like, gosh, you know, I call so often, they're, you know, but I think they care. And especially, you know, if it's school buses, and so if it's something that you observe, I think the police would be considerable, or, or would consider setting up some type of operation. I hate to call it sting, but I'm, I'm sure they would sit and, and watch. And, and I, I think it's, it only takes a ticket or two for people to start driving better everywhere. You know, so like, if, if somebody is ticketed for pulling a speed bump, I, I have a feeling you get one or two tickets, that third ticket, then your, and, and your insurance is going to be insane. And so people do care about, once they receive tickets, and they do drive, like, you get a ticket for running or going past the bus stop, and then you go somewhere else, you're going to drive a little bit more responsibly somewhere else. So tickets work too.
Thank you, Gary, for taking the project on, you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Commissioner, I'm going to turn now to Vice Mayor Turkin.
Thank you, Mayor. Gary, thank you so much for, for putting this forward, Drive Safe Boynton, yeah, it was like the first thing I learned, I think, after I got elected. And, and I, I would say the only thing, the only suggestion I would make, I think, with this program is, like, I talked to a lot of people, and speeding was like the number one thing. And so like, what, what options do we have on maybe like loosening up that tape? Because I, I can tell you, like Southeast 31st, that was their number one priority. 75% of the individuals I talked to, I sent an email earlier this week from a, he now, when I first met him, he was a father to be, he is now a father, and this is what he brought forward to me, again. And so, you know, I think, I just hate, like, we're represent, representatives for our district, and people get busy, right? They choose us to make decisions, they choose us to make their lives, they choose us to have better quality lives. And so, like, if, if I need to go out, like, I'll do that, you know what I mean? But they are ta, they're paying taxes, and then we're going to ask them to do this, and it's like, hey, like, this is what I want, can you just figure it out? Instead of, and there's always going to be that individual that will go and knock on people's doors and get that application. But I think what we see is people get busy, and I think that there, there, if, if there is, or if we can look at a way to make this a little bit more simple, because, I mean, Gary, we've had this conversation, you know, for months, and I'm super grateful for everything that we did in Forest Park. We got one right in front of my house, and I don't care, you know what I mean? Because I think that if someone is objecting a speed bump, you know, maybe it's annoying to them, I get that, and, you know, you got to slow down. But what's, what's the overall goal here, right? The overall goal here is public safety, and, you know, I, I'd rather have 1,000 people complain to me about a sign in the yard and more speed bumps than have a phone call that there's a dead child that was hit from speeding. And I ran into that a, a week or two ago, I followed up on an email that, on my street, a little bit more west, coming down the hill, you know, my neighbor's kid was riding on his bike, right? They never, they never rode on their bikes, now everyone's riding on their bikes now because of these speed bumps, right? But they go over one west, and they start zooming down that hill, and then they slow down right before. But in between that gap, I think this is where, this is where I think it is important, and, and I love that you brought up, you know, you'll go and you'll look at those streets, to have that subjective view of this, right? Because, you know, we can look at it, you know, from a methodical lens, but I, I, I think if the people are bringing up an application, they're doing that subjectively, right? And subjectively, you know, I think we need to open that lens more when we make these decisions, because, you know, you, you don't live on Southwest Second Avenue. You know, Northwest 17th, whatever street you live on, you know, the residents do, then they call us, or, or we do, you know, and and I see this every day, and, and I personally like the larger ones, I've seen the little ones, and, you know, if you drive a truck or a higher place vehicle, you're coming right over that thing. Whereas those larger ones, if you speed, it's going to scrape the bottom of your car. And, and after you guys put that one in, in, on my street, it's like the first two nights, I just heard boom, boom, like, the first, it's like gunshots, your first two nights, and then I heard it less and less and less, because what happened? People were messing up their cars because they're speeding, you shouldn't be speeding. We can ask people to slow down, right? But like, you can't change people's behaviors unless you put something that's, you know, fiscal there. And so I, you know, I, I think this is a great program. And I, I just, again, I really thank you, Gary, for what you've done, and, and staff, and, and the PD too, for coming in and having these community meetings and making it more effective. Like, I think that might be like a ru, like a routine meeting with, which, with each district, so that they don't have to worry about, you know, going and grabbing signatures. You don't want to do that if I'm, you know, working, and I got kids, you know, I don't want to do that. So I, I don't know if we can look at how we could make this process a little bit more simple. That's my only feedback, but, you know, I know that, you know, my neighborhood and myself personally are very grateful, you know, for, for the work you've done, Gary. And, and it's cost effective too, right? Like, I think prior, there was discussion of, you know, different traffic calming measure, where we utilize, like, I think, art funds for, like, a tabletop or something, and, and rerouting, and, and that was expensive. And I think this is a, this is just a more simplistic approach, and I love it. And, you know, I would definitely like to be more involved with this, 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 this program, and just continuing the conversation, because at the end of the day, you know, Gary, you're like a one man show, and I know, yeah. Because it, at the end of the day, you know, Gary, you're like a one man show and I know, yeah, you do a lot. And so, um. It, no matter who you are, things will fall through the cracks. And so whatever help I can do, you know, I, I want to offer that. Cause I, again, I think this is, this is a, a, a very. Like systemic issue throughout this, the city, right? And I think there's a very simple solution. And, um, uh, you know, again, and I think it also helps the PD too. Like if, you know, wake up at two in the morning, someone's, uh. Chasing or a guy got an officer chasing somebody like, are you going to get them quicker if there's a speed bump? You know, probably. And so I, I think this is a win-win. Um, you know, just, just throughout the city. And so I. Yeah, I, I love them, you know, I want to see them everywhere in my district at least. Cause that's what my people want. And so again, I just, uh. Appreciate you, appreciate you, Andrew Mack and Mario for putting this all together. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Cruz.
I'm good. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dunmire. I believe this concludes this item. And, um, I just want to confirm. You want to, you have, go ahead, Commissioner.
Gary, are you, are you looking, uh, considering, uh, turnabouts? I don't like them.
I mean, like roundabouts or?
Roundabout, whatever you call them.
Well, there's one spot that, uh, we're trying, we're pushing for one. It's a high reg and minor. And, and so we think that's a good spot for one. But that's really, uh, we thought about here on Seacrest Two at Ocean. Um, but that, that one's a little harder to plan. That's not our road. So, I mean, I'm, I'm always trying to find spots to, to look at them. There's one in front of park, parkside condominium. I think that's a bad spot for one. I wouldn't put one there, but nevertheless, it's there. So, I mean, there's, there's, there's a time and place for it, for sure.
Okay. Do, do, are you getting any pushback at all from emergency people from PD and firefighters?
Not yet, but one of the things, one of the things I do is when I have an application or I'm putting something in, I, I run it by Sergeant Monroe. And so I share everything with them. I don't want to do anything that isn't going to benefit the police department too. Okay. So, thanks, Gary. Yes, sir.
All right. Anything else? All right. Thank you. Now I believe this is the final item on the agenda, but I just want to confirm that I have not missed anything. All right. Are there any closing comments from my colleagues?
Feel better.
Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate it.
Get some rest.
Working on it. Um, if there's nothing else, may have a motion to adjourn. All right. I've heard multiple motions and multiple seconds. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. The ayes have it, motion passes. Have a good night, everyone. And thank you to all of our staff who waited till the end.
All right.